Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P. L. 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We will now move on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman.
Hello, everyone. So I just want to remind everyone that we still have free transportation for Asbury Park residents to go to either medical appointments or grocery shopping. And in order to make an appointment, you would call 201-939-4242. And that's it. I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season. That's it.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes, good evening. And I just want to remind everyone that there is still free parking until Christmas Day. So if you're downtown and here's an opportunity to shop with our businesses, so please take advantage of that opportunity. And I want to say thank you to everyone in this city who has just pulled with us and worked so hard that we've been able to maintain this year. And our businesses, our employees, and our residents. This has been a tough year. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and here's hoping for a happier New Year.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes, I like to say Happy Holiday to everyone and a blessed holiday, and please be safe. I also like to remind the people in Asbury Park that Good Old Baptist Church on Washington Avenue will be giving out free toys tomorrow at 10 o'clock. That's Wednesday at 10 o'clock. Also, they will be giving out free meals. Stay safe, continue to wear your mask, and God bless you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Yvonne said, and I want to thank Connie Breach and the Asbury Park Toy Drive, who managed to give out thousands of gifts to hundreds of families this year and all of her volunteers and helpers. This was not an easy year to accomplish that task in a socially distant way. And I think she's in her 19th or 20th year of doing this. And so, you know, kudos for getting that job done. And I'm just going to encourage everybody on the call and anyone that you're talking to as much as humanly possible to buy locally this year. This has not been an easy year for our businesses. They are struggling, and I think that really puts it mildly. So picking up calendars, t-shirts, dinner drinks may be the maker-breaker for them this year. And so, as much as humanly possible, if you could shop local and support these local businesses, that would be great. That's it, Melody.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you, and I wish everybody Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas. And I urge everybody to stay vigilant, continue to wear your mask. Everything I read, I hate to be Mr. Doom and Gloom, but everything I read, the numbers are going to get worse before they get better. Not even close to being out of the woods, thank goodness we have the vaccine coming. Again, everybody be safe, and thank you all for challenging here. Thank you.
We will now move on to matters from City Manager.
Thanks, Melody. I was muted. I have nothing. Thank you.
Matters from the City Attorney.
And I have nothing at this time either, Melody. Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Members of the public may participate by dialing *9 on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you have 1 minute remaining and *6 to unmute yourself. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public. I am calling upon 3350. Please state your name and address for the record. 3350.
Ernest McNolly, 4 Mathieu Lake Drive, Apartment 5D, The Sandtender, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I'd like to start off by saying I address this to Councilman Kendall and his son, the police officer Jesse Kendall Jr., I guess, or the third, and their associate at The Sandtender, the super Keith Burell. Continued to be threatening going on, what we allege to be crime and police reports. And in fact, the city won't do anything about it. They've taken reports from multiple residents, and everything gets covered up because it's a councilman, just like the fact that he was fired as a school teacher in Asbury for crimes against children, abusing children. And he denies it right at council meetings. And I'm sitting with all the court records, and he denies it. I'd like to know how you get away with that. A city manager and city attorney, I find it interesting. Every meeting, you have no matters to talk about. The city is in financial ruination. There's crime, corruption, sex crime, collusion, conspiracy everywhere, and no one has anything to say. A city manager who wreaked havoc up in Homedale, who now comes here and is wreaking havoc, right? With the former city manager, our best friend, Michael Capabianco, who is gone, thank God, and now is in Seaside Park, and apparently been fired from there. I mean, it tells you a lot about who's coming in and out of Asbury and how they're getting on these boards, committees, getting appointed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's a mess, and it's all covered up by the prosecutor, by the local assembly people, by a senator, et cetera. Asbury needs a major investigation, just like Operation Bid Rig, where half the city got arrested, mayor, council, city manager.
1 minute remaining.
Thank you. So, and the city manager has reports about complaints against employees of the city, like the code enforcement lady threatening residents, and she refuses with the police chief to even investigate or do anything. She's silent on everything and just can't keep going on like this. Lawsuits are flooding the city, and this city manager, the only thing she has to say is, "No, no comments. I have nothing to say." Really. And Amy Quinn, here we go, owns two units in The Sandtender, where we can't even live there. It's so dangerous. And she won't even help us as an owner, investor of two units, with the problem board and the former managers or city officials, Zylan Farrenbach, who owns Townsmen. She won't help us with anything: crime, drugs, sex offense, pollution.
Ends up. Now moving on to 4026. Please state your name and address for the record. 4026, *6 to unmute yourself. 4026, please state your name and address for the record.
I apologize. I'm actually calling regards to the rent stabilization. My name is Sylvie Saint Pierre.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I can barely hear you.
Okay. Everyone, my name is Sylvie Saint Pierre. I called last time in regards to the rent stabilization. I just want you guys to know how passionate I am about it because I have neighbors, family members, who are currently undergoing the current situation where landlords are still increasing their rents despite of the current national condition right now, or should I say, despite the current condition we have with the COVID. And I implore you guys to really look into it and find a way to really put this ordinance through because it is a necessity, not just for me, but also for those who are around me. And I would love to be able to help, but I'm doing this because although I may not be in this situation, but I know so many people who are, whether it's family members or neighbors. And a lot of them don't really speak English, so since I am able to, I'm calling on their behalf. And it is an honor and privilege for me to be able to be the voice, to speak on their behalf. So please, I would be forever grateful if you guys would consider actually working something out with the city so that the landlords don't have all the power. So, yeah, please, that's really why I'm calling. And I mean, I will be listening in so I can hear what else is going on and when I have the opportunity to really speak about it. But I would love to share a few stories with you guys so that you know some of the struggles that some of these people are dealing with at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Saint Pierre, can you state your address for the record, please?
1232 Mona Avenue.
Thank you.
Apartment 2.
Thank you very much. This is John Moore. Just so everybody knows, yes, this is one of the several ordinances later on in the meeting. So at that time, everybody gets a chance to speak about that if they want to speak about it then. Thank you.
Hey, I am calling upon Pam Lamberton. Please state your name and address for the record.
Pam Lamberton. I live at 321 Sunset Avenue. Good evening, Council. I'm interested in Resolution 363, which refers to a new transportation office. I was wondering if you could tell us where that is and what functions are going to be working out of those offices. And I also wanted to speak regarding the rent stabilization ordinance. Not on the ordinance itself, but I think there will be a lot of people speaking tonight. And as a matter of transparency, I would ask that any person who speaks identify themselves beyond their name and address. I would like to know if the address in AP is a home or if it's an office. And because of a letter that appeared in The Sun, if the speaker is representing a group, I would like to know who is in that group and whether or not they're all landlords or who actually they are. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, Pam. This is Donna. We're going to be moving the transportation offices to the actual transportation center where the old Tops Taxi used to be. Due to COVID and space constraints, we've had to relocate some of the staff, and they'll be relocated up there shortly.
Oh, how about that? Who's going to be working there?
Some of the staff. It'll be all the staff of the transportation center. Our police department will maintain a substation down there, but this way it just spreads out the employees a little bit better.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nick.
I am calling upon Felicia Simmons. Please state your name and address for the record. Felicia Simmons, your name and address for the record. *6 to unmute yourself.
Now, I'm on the phone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I was mostly to speak about the ordinance, but also to kind of echo what Ms. Lamberton said about when people speak, please identify if they're part of the, what is it, the Landlord Tenet Association? If possible. Thank you.
Does that complete your comments, Felicia? I believe Felicia's done.
She, I think she muted herself, but yes.
Okay. I'm calling upon 9700. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. Good evening. This is Peter Siegel. I'm at 1200 Webb Street. And thank you for your time tonight. I heard Mayor Moore say that we would have a chance to speak later on regarding the rent control ordinance. So if that's the case, then I have no need to speak now. Can you just confirm?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait so that we can press the meeting forward. I'll wait to speak later. Thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Yep, and Peter, yep, correct, and thank you.
I am calling upon Carrie. Please state your.
Melody, can I interrupt one second because I'm getting a few chats? If folks are looking to speak, they should press *9 on their phone. Or if they're using a computer in Zoom, there should be a raise hand button to speak.
Correct, yep. I am calling upon Carrie. Carrie, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, 500 Mathieu Lake Drive. Good evening, everyone. I'm just calling because I'm wondering, it's a pretty full agenda, and there's a ton of us here for the rent stabilization ordinance. I'm wondering if you could potentially move that up so that a lot of folks aren't waiting to speak until 9 o'clock tonight or later tonight. So that's one of my questions. The other is, last week I asked you guys, or last time I asked you guys, how can, you know, citizens participate in the budget process? I haven't heard from you on it. So can you give us a kind of a clue on how we can get involved in budgeting before the actual budget comes out? And when does the budget come out? We've had some questions about that. So if you could just enlighten us all about the budget. Thank you.
Okay, it's John Moore. And Carrie, you called me today as far as like switching the agenda. And I explained to you, like, the agenda is made up as far as ordinances, like how they came into the council. And you see the number, whatever, 27, 28, 29, 30. This was the last one presented. The other ones were presented before then. So it's the normal course of the city as past practice, and we're not going to deviate tonight. As far as the budget, Donna wants to respond. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Carrie, right now, we're in the process of collecting all the budget requests from all the department heads. We're still very early in the process. Once we get all that together, the CFO will put together some numbers, and then we'll start to have our conversations. I will talk to the council about some ideas that I have regarding participation, and I hope to have something to be able to report on in January.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I am calling upon 5124. Please state your name and address for the record. *6 to unmute yourself.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue, Asbury Park. You got a loaded agenda tonight, but two of the things that stuck out in my mind was, why are we buying new vehicles again? I thought we bought those when Capabianco was there. He bought everything. And the other thing was about the, I guess, the salary ordinance. Not the, yeah, well, the salary ordinance too. I had three things. I got them mixed up. I don't understand how civil service works. You have a minimum and a maximum in the title you're in. Why is, why does that maximum move again? I thought when you had to move it, that person would have to take a test for a higher position, but you keep moving the maximum. That's, I don't understand how you have a minimum and a maximum, and the maximum keeps moving. I thought maximum meant the end. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was the ordinance on rent control. I mean, I think people should realize what's happened here. I don't think they know that the redevelopment plan really moves the rentals, the home sales. And every year, we have a reevaluation of our homes. Those are the things that really move the rents. And I don't understand why people don't understand that, that we get reevaluated every year. What's that about? I understand that Newark hasn't been reevaluated for 25 years. I don't see any reason to reevaluate us every year other than raising your taxes and, of course, raising the property value. I mean, it was supposed to be a five-year program. What happened here? So the salary ordinance from minimum to maximum? I mean, I'd like to really have an answer on that. When is this going to stop? This has been going on for years. And I wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a healthy New Year.
1 minute remaining.
I'll be back when you have the rent control ordinance come up.
Okay, Rita, this is John Moore. Number one, I'm happy you're at the hospital, out of rehab, and you're back on a council. God bless you, and a happy holiday to you. As far as minimum and maximum, Rita, if we kept like the maximum at like 1995 levels, you have to adjust because of raises. I mean, that's why the maximum goes up. I mean, we can't keep the maximum for like, say, Job A at $60,000, but if there's like 2% raise every year, the maximum is like now $80,000. So that's the reason. It's the only reason, and it's a logical reason. Again, okay, we'll hear from you later. Thank you kindly.
Yeah, I'm calling upon 9700. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Peter again. I hope I'm not violating anybody. I yielded before, but I decided I wanted to ask if I may come back. May I, or do I not?
Nope. If you get one bite of the apple, there's.
Okay, thanks. I understand. Thank you, and sorry for, all right, thanks. Okay.
No problem.
I am calling upon 3966. Please state your name and address for the record. 3966.
Yes, hi. My name is Dana DeVino. I live at 600 Cookman Avenue. First, thanks for all the good work that you guys do do, and also Happy Holidays to everybody. So I'm just here because I would just want to say, I heard several people talk about the rent stabilization ordinance, and I know you're saying that'll come up later. And I just want, basically, I just wanted to say that I think most of us, I guess I should speak for myself, are just a little bit uneducated in general. So I wasn't sure if this was going to be, you know, you guys informing the public and speaking to us a little bit about what is going on, or if it was just going to be public comment. So that's my first question. And then my second question is, when you do explain to us what the plan is, will there be another meeting or another time for people to kind of sit down and talk together? I am not with any specific group or representing anyone except I live in town and I own property in town and have for a very long time. So that's it. First question, just are you going to kind of educate the public about that ordinance a little bit more than just having read the ordinance itself? And second question is if there would be another time in the future before it's voted upon for several different interests to come together and talk about it?
Does that complete your comments, Dana?
Yes, just those two questions.
Okay, it's John Moore, number one. Thank you for the Happy Holidays wishes. Same to you. As far as like your question, will we try to educate people? The city will make a prepared statement before that ordinance is introduced, which hopefully will help some. As far as the second question, will there be another meeting? I don't know. I would say it's probably going to be voted on tonight, so we'll go from there. And again, thank you very much.
I'm calling upon.
Mayor, if I could just make one quick statement before we move on to the next speaker. In your comments, this is Fred Raffetto, city attorney, by the way. In your comments, you referenced before the ordinance is introduced, and I just don't want there to be any misunderstanding out there. The ordinance already has been introduced because the way the law is written, when the municipal clerk certifies that the petitioners had enough signatures and forwards the ordinance to the council, the ordinance is considered to be introduced at that point. Tonight, the ordinance is scheduled for a public hearing. So later on on the agenda for this evening, we'll get to the public hearing on the ordinance. And as you indicated, I will be making a statement at that time before the council opens up the public hearing. And one last comment, just so there's no misunderstanding. This is not an ordinance that was initiated by the mayor and council. This is an ordinance that was initiated by a group of petitioners who have moved it forward under the initiative and referendum statutes under the Faulkner Act, which is the government statute to govern our form of government. And that's it, ma'am. Thanks.
I thank you for clarification. My bad. I meant to say introduced to the public for a conversation tonight. So yes, it has been introduced. So before public comment, there will be a statement from the council. Thank you.
I'm calling upon TR. TR, please state your name and address for the record.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. I just want to ask about the transportation center. The cab station moving, does that mean they just gave up their space? And how many other people in that building are leaving out of the transportation center? Is there anything else that's going to be taught about remodeling or any focus on it? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. John Moore. All the leases were up. We needed the space. The taxi company and the other people in there realized that. And so we needed the space so we could have a real police substation in the southwest quadrant, and that's it.
Are you finished, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and Donna, if you want to add anything, please add.
No, Mayor, that's right. Nothing else to add. Thank you.
I'm calling upon 2370. Please state your name and address for the record.
Give a second. 2370, you may need to press *6.
Hello.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Randy Thompson, Help My Handcuffs Incorporated, Park Avenue. I got a couple of questions related to policing issues. Regarding the Equity Committee, I'd like to know who put the deputy chief of police into the ordinance or nominated that person? I don't know if you want all my questions at once.
Yes, please state all your questions.
Sure. And then I'd like to ask why the spy tower has been deployed to Third Avenue? That was most recently in the Asbury Park Village. Put there without most of the residents' input and was highly inappropriate, and they did not want it there. And then it was shifted, when we started protesting, down by the post office. This is not about public safety. This is about spying on certain groups. And now it's deployed to Third Avenue, and we don't know why. So I'd like an answer on that. And just as a closing statement, I'd like to say that with the new use of force guidelines that came out with the Attorney General, I think we know exactly where the Asbury Park Police Department comes on the line of history with the amazing amount of violence that is enacted on this community. And that's on the side of unreasonable violence and oppressive tactics.
Does that complete your comments?
Well, I have the question. My comment, yeah.
We're not going to, you got 3 minutes. We're not going to answer until you state your time. So you can use the rest of your time.
No, no. I said, yeah, those are my comments. I just like the answers to the questions about who nominated the deputy chief to the Equity Committee. Was there a purpose behind that, and who did that? Why is the spy tower deployed to Third Avenue now?
Okay, so thank you, Randy. Then that's all the questions and all the comments you have. Okay, so it's John Moore. I'll let Donna answer the first one as far as like the deputy police chief. As far as Third Avenue, I'll let Donna answer that one also, just because living on Fourth Avenue, I saw it there the other day, and I don't know why either, so I guess. I guess I'm gonna punt all these to Donna. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. So, I don't have an answer on the police deployment, not the police chief. I can certainly ask the police chief, but they do things for reasons that I don't have the ability to know about. Regarding the Equity Committee, that was a council decision on the members of the committee. Everyone submitted applications, and residents and staff were placed on the committee. That's it, Melody.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meeting to the-
Melody, Melody, can you hear me?
Yes.
There were two, there were two residents who said they were not able to use the raise hand button, or press star nine, and they would like to speak.
Okay.
One was Maureen, Maureen Nevin.
Okay. All right.
So, let me-
Maureen?
Go ahead and find her.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, Maureen. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. It's Maureen Nevin, Deal Lake Court, Asbury Park.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask about the, I realize that the ordinance, for the Coalition's ordinance, twenty-twenty-twenty-five, is not going to be heard until toward the end of the ordinances. And there's, of course, a lot of public interest. I am now an advocate for that ordinance. And I know that there were about seven hundred, at least, signers of the petition in favor of that ordinance. So, I'm curious as to why the city, the city council, which has the power to change the alignment, the lineup for the ordinances, wouldn't have made an exception and moved it to a closer time for the reading? Because, you know, the fact that they are not limited, people responding to an ordinance are not limited to a three-minute limit. So, it can go on very long. I'd like to know why that decision was made. And also, on three-six-two, the resolution authorizing the purchase of traffic safety signage. How much is that expenditure for that? It's a grant, I understand. None of the city's money will be used, as far as I know. But what was the amount, again, and what are the other uses that that grant could be used for? So, that's all I have now.
Does that complete your comments, Maureen?
Yeah, I guess I've got a minute yet.
Yes, you have one minute left.
Okay. I, well, when the ordinance comes up, appropriating three hundred and sixty-two thousand for vehicles, I'd like to know if they want to do it, in case I don't get a chance to ask that later. And I guess most of my questions are for the rent control, the rent control topic, because it's very important. It's got a lot of facets to it. And there's a great need. And I think it's ironic that we need affordable housing. I mean, doesn't that say that we don't have affordable housing in the city? The landlords, so far, have suggested more affordable housing. Because they don't want to make affordable rents available. Thank you.
Okay, Maureen, it's John Moore. Thank you. The first question was already asked and answered, so I'm not gonna repeat it again. You heard it. The second question, I'm gonna punt to either Michael or Donna. I mean, it's for safety for pedestrians and drivers. I'll punt it to Michael.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, Resolution twenty-twenty-three-sixty-two was for the purchase of traffic safety signage, and it requires a resolution because it exceeds our normal purchasing threshold. But this signage would be purchased through the Transportation Utility Budget through a bid that was publicly bid, bid pricing. So, and it's for, as you said, traffic safety signage for pedestrians and stop signs.
Okay, are there any additional comments? Okay, I am.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
I thought Michael said there was two people that couldn't get in. Maureen was one.
I see another hand raised now.
Okay.
I'm calling upon nine zero one seven. Please state your name and address for the record. Nine zero one seven.
Press star six to unmute. There you go.
Hi, this is Ron Simonini from the Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition, three oh one Route seventeen North, Rutherford, New Jersey. I know that you're gonna have a public hearing on the rent control ordinance that's proposed. Think there are other means of addressing affordable housing and tenant protections in Asbury Park. And I'm wondering if that can be something that you put in a future agenda that bridges the time of this ordinance's constrictions, because at this point, the council itself cannot address any rent control ordinance that doesn't have the approval of the Committee of Petitioners. They have that right under the Faulkner Act now, that if their ordinance is approved, it'll be untouchable for three years. And if it's not approved, it's also untouchable rent control for three years. And that leaves everybody in a precarious position that we think there should be some dialogue about, because clearly, there's a sensitivity to the need for tenant protections, but there's also a great amount of unhappiness about the conditions that this ordinance would create among property owners. So, wanted to throw that out there before the public hearing on rent control. It's not the only means of addressing tenant stability and affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am calling upon six zero eight-two. Please state your name and address for the record. Star six to unmute yourself. Six zero eight-two. Star six to unmute yourself, six zero eight-two.
Maybe, oh, they lowered their hand, Melody.
Okay. We've gotten everyone who said they couldn't get in, right, Mike?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Not seeing any other hands raised, the motion to close the meeting to the public.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Moore.
All in favor?
All right.
Meeting is now closed to the public. We will now move on to, move on to minutes. I have the executive session minutes of December ninth, the four P M. meeting, the Municipal Council regular meeting, December ninth minutes, the six P M. meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll now move on to individual resolutions. Resolution twenty-twenty-three-fifty-seven is a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations in the fiscal year twenty-twenty budget. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-fifty-eight, a resolution authorizing an agreement with geese chasers for geese management at Sunset Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-fifty-nine, is a resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement with the township of Neptune for geese management of Wesley Lake. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-sixty, a resolution awarding a contract to B R. Welding for the R B C. West Channel Improvements, number one, at the wastewater treatment plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-sixty-one, a resolution authorizing the City of Asbury Park to grant an assignable license to permit an encroachment over a certain portion of the right-of-way area adjacent to the property located at twelve hundred Asbury Avenue, six thirty Church Street, block one-six-zero-five, lot one, Asbury Park, New Jersey, and execute a license agreement associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-sixty-two, a resolution authorizing the purchase of traffic safety signage through the Transportation Utility. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-sixty-three, a resolution authorizing the purchase of access control security system for the new transportation offices. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-sixty-four, the resolution authorizing the purchase of uniforms for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-sixty-five, a resolution authorizing the boom reel replaced on the twenty-thirteen Seagrave aerial scope reel at the fire department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to ordinances, public hearing. We have ordinance twenty-twenty-two-five with the title, a capital ordinance appropriating the sum of three hundred and sixty-two thousand for vehicles for various departments. Can I ask for a brief summary of the ordinance before we open it up to the public? And the details for the public to join in the public hearing are, if you're using a computer, you're gonna use the raise hand function. And members of the public may participate in the public hearing by dialing star nine on your phone, if you're using a phone. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Your comments and questions must be about the ordinance being presented for a public hearing. Mr. Mayor, do you want a brief summary?
I can give it, Melody.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, this is Donna. So, this is for the capital purchase of vehicles that were bonded for in twenty eighteen. They were not purchased in twenty nineteen, and due to the pandemic, all of our spending was halted for twenty twenty. All vehicles will be, all vehicles for the city will be part of a five-year capital plan, and vehicles will be replaced on a schedule moving forward. This will, for lack of a better word, catch up the vehicles. And then, moving forward each year as part of the budget, it will be a line item for the capital purchase of vehicles. That's it, Melody.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty-twenty-two-five?
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember-
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? The public hearing is now open on ordinance twenty-twenty-two-five. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone, or you're gonna use the raise hand function in the meeting. Let me see. I am calling upon Ernest McNolly. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ernest McNolly, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, apartment five D., Asbury Park, New Jersey, also known as the Sand Tender. I'm a homeowner here. I purchased that home in August of two thousand and seven. So, I've been here sort of seeing what goes on in Asbury for thirteen years. And relative to these vehicles, I can only say that it's a pattern. It's observed, city employees and people abusing the city vehicles. We had one department head have two accidents and not report it. We had a former deputy police chief take a city police car to Florida on a joyride, have multiple accidents, and not report them. So, I'm talking about this ordinance, please. Thank you.
Mr. McNolly?
Yeah.
It's John Moore. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I apologize. But you're given, like-
A background.
You're giving statements. Yet, please, you gotta stay to the topic. It's about the ordinance itself, as far as what we're looking to buy. It's very clear, two police vehicles, a fire vehicle, and a vehicle for S U V for administration. So, please, you guys stay on the subject, or else we'll never get done tonight. So, please stay on the-
Okay. Well, okay. So, now, it's the first time you actually told us what it's for. You didn't say two police cars, a fire vehicle, and a, what's the other one, an S U V?
Correct. And they've been up on the website for over a week.
Okay, well, okay. So, okay. So, in my opinion, this sounds like it's, as the city manager said, carried over from the former city manager, two thousand and eighteen, who, as we all observe and see, it was a flood of new cars. I don't know if I've ever seen a city as financially in trouble as Asbury, have so many brand-new cars for everybody. I mean, what's wrong with seeing, you know, code inspectors driving a ten-year-old car that's washed and well-maintained? Why do they all need brand-new Ford Explorers? Why do we keep spending this, and these cars get abused? Anybody can see it. And half the time, they're out of town on personal use. They're at liquor stores picking up liquor. We don't want it. How do you just say no? How does anybody say no to these city managers, who just say yes to everything? I mean, how does that happen?
Mr. McNolly-
My vote is no. No new vehicles. End of story. Rent a vehicle.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Rita Moreno. Please state your name and address for the record. Rita Moreno, star six to unmute yourself. Rita?
Okay. I hate to say I agree with Ernie, but I don't, I don't understand the purchase of all these cars. We're only one little square mile. Where is everybody going with these cars? They take up half- They take up half the parking lot when we go down to pay our taxes. All you see is city vehicles. I mean, I don't understand it. Why can't they leave the vehicles somewhere? Maybe in the new transportation center and let them bring their own cars to work? And then we would save on gas and the car. And then maybe we can use it for a few more years. We have to use common sense now. It's time for that. You keep buying and buying and just bonding everything and putting our children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren in hock. I, I think everybody knows what bonding is, but it, it's, it's really, we're one little mile. I can go back to years ago where the guy in the city yard kept painting his car. And he, it was like a fifteen-year-old car, but he kept it in good shape. He was the director of Public Works. Probably everybody knew who he was. Joe Morrow. He had the oldest car in the world. But he painted it every year and, and kept it maintained. There's no reason to get new cars. You see the other towns? They're driving around in old vehicles. Enough already. Okay?
Does that complete your comments?
I'm finished.
Okay Rita, thank you. And just to make it a little bit like honest, Joe Morrow retired in nineteen eighty and, uh, when I was with D P W, believe me, we got half of our cars and trucks from hand-me-downs from the gas company because the city was broke. So, uh, again, this is a capital ordinance and it's police vehicles and fire vehicles. Thank you.
I'm calling upon three five zero nine. Please state your name and address for the record. Three five zero nine, star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. This is Michael Kushner, eleven hundred Fifth Avenue. And, uh, I just have a, a simple question. I think John, you may have just said it, but what I want to know is what kind of vehicles these are? I, is it police? Is it fire? Is it for the city? Um, for D P W? Um, I, I don't have an opinion either way, but it would just be helpful if I knew exactly, if we just knew exactly what kind of vehicles we're going to be purchasing. That's it. That's it for my comments. This is a simple question. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's two police vehicles and related equipment because you just can't go buy a car and say, okay, it's police. You gotta put all the appropriate, like, you know, stuff in the car. So that's what drives the price up a little bit. And again, we, we started like a couple of years ago, uh, instead of just doing it like, buying like a bunch of one year, we, we're on a revolving, like, we buy two or three every year. The fire vehicle is a replacement of a truck that's something like twenty-five years old and is definitely needed. And there's one S U V through the administration office. Uh, and again, I apologize. This was up on the website if nobody saw it. So thank you.
I am calling upon Tracy Rogers. Please state your name and address for the record. Tracy Rogers, star six to unmute yourself.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. Um, we had talked about, um, uh, different analysis of the, uh, administration and giving more update on information and maybe this is, uh, should follow over to the, um, to the city manager. Uh, why can't we have a inventory and you don't have to put the names of what actually the vehicles are, but you could put the, uh, uh, a number, you can put, uh, 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 you know, department and a service report, you know, this is updated to the community. We would know what our fleet is, why we're updating, what the analysis is, so we can actually, uh, you know, the, the residents want to know what their, what their tax dollars are going to. So is this, I think, more prudent if we look at the purchasing and look at how the community could get more involved in understanding how many vehicles we have, what needs to come in. And, you know, you could put a note as to what you think the expectation of life on vehicles are. So thank you.
Thanks Tracy. And we actually, you're, you're right, spot on. We already have that inventory. Um, we are, um, identifying our, our vehicle fleet, um, about, I can't, about six months ago, we actually did an auction to get rid of a lot of our older vehicles. Um, and we do have this in place. Um, it's not something that we put on the website, but we can certainly do that. So I'll be sure to get that up there in the next month or so.
Hey, I am calling upon Matt Cress. Matt Cress, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, how you doing? Matthew Crescio, sixteen fifteen Park Avenue. Um, just the one question I have is what vehicle has been replaced at the fire department?
I'm sorry, what was the question? Vehicles replaced where?
What vehicle is being replaced at the fire headquarters?
It was an old Humper truck, I believe. I don't have it in front of me unfortunately. That's the one piece of paper I don't have. Um, it was an older vehicles, the mayor stated, about twenty-five years old. Um, we're buying this. This is a used, this is a used piece of apparatus. It's not even a new, a, a new, uh, purchase. It's something that we're buying you from another agent.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Hey, not seeing any other hand, hands raised.
Melody, uh, Melody Maureen Nevin is, uh, still having an issue with raising her hand. She would like to speak on this ordinance as well.
Okay.
Uh, let me just get her unmuted.
Maureen, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. It's Maureen Nevin, Deal Lake Court, Asbury Park. Um, I, I appreciate the questions, um, that you've answered so far on this purchase. Um, but I'm, I'm still not clear whether or not, um, the vehicles that we're spending three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars on, um, were actually, uh, put out for bid.
So these are, these are all purchased under state contract, Maureen.
Okay.
Considering this bonding, this bonding was done, I believe in twenty eighteen. So that's when it was bonded for.
Wow.
We're just cleaning up the books.
Sorry, what was that about the books?
Just cleaning out the old. So we have a lot of outstanding ordinances that our CFO has been canceling and we're, you know, we're trying to clean up our, our bond.
So we'll, we'll have to have a chat someday on, on the, um, what, what it means to go through the state as opposed to, uh, go out for bid because I'm not clear on that.
So I can answer that real quick. So under the, the state purchasing laws, a municipality is required to go out to bid or they can, they can purchase vehicles off of a state contract, also through a co-op. So the co-op and state contract, we don't need to go out to bid from. So vehicles, for example, are on state contract and this way we don't need to go out for bid. If we were looking for a specific type of vehicle that wasn't under state contract, then we would go out to bid for that.
Okay, thanks very much. I appreciate that.
No problem. Thanks, Maureen.
Tracy? Tracy Rogers?
Yeah, Donna, I, I'd just like to let that, the, 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 uh, residents know that has been around for a long time. The state established the, uh, the contract. So it basically, the state has said, you know, we've gone out, we've taken analysis and, you know, cars that we will, we will purchase because we've done it collectively and we've done analysis. So that's why it's allowed to go out without bid. So I just wanted everybody to understand, you know, this isn't just Asbury, but all, all municipalities have that option.
Thanks Tracy.
Hey, not seeing any other hands raised. A motion to close the meeting to the public?
Move to close.
Second. Second, ki- second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adopt Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-five?
Move to adopt. Move to adopt Quinn.
Do I have a second on that?
Second Chapman.
Chapman, okay. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are, we, we have the public hearing for Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-six, an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending chapter seven of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations. Do we have a brief summary of the ordinance before we open it up?
Go ahead, Michael. This is pretty easy. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is, uh, Mike Manzella, Director of Transportation and Deputy City Manager. Uh, this ordinance simply changes one block of Langford Street between Fifth Avenue and Sunset Avenue to a one-way street northbound. Right now, the street is actually not wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic. Um, and there have been several residents on that block who have asked for the city to investigate and we did find that the street is really too narrow, uh, by engineering standards to have two-way traffic. The rest of Langford Street is, is very much wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic, but this one block between Fifth and Sunset is not. So this ordinance would make it a one-way street northbound.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Members of the public may participate in the meeting by using the raise hand function on your computer or by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Your comments or questions must be about the ordinance being presented for the public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open Chapman.
Second Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now open to the public? I am calling upon Ernest McNolley. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh yeah, Ernest McNolley, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, apartment five D, the Sand Tender, uh, Asbury Park. Uh, I'm just wondering, could anybody ask Councilman Kendall to kind of mute his mic? I mean, it doesn't seem, sound too well, but, you know, to be coughing and wheezing all the time into the meeting is it's not, it's not that polite.
This has nothing to do with the ordinance.
Why can't I?
Okay. Okay, well.
You heard that.
Okay.
Him coughing.
Yeah. Okay, so let me, let me move on to the street. So let me understand. So at thirty years, we finally figured out that that street is too narrow. Is that, is that what Mister Manzella said? You know, a, a, a resident raised a concern and we studied it and found out the engineers, it really shouldn't be two-way. So how long has it been two-way? Fifty years? A hundred years? And does that mean that maybe we ought to look at all the streets instead of waiting for residents to complain? It does, it, it doesn't make sense. And, uh, a- at least in my opinion, by making these streets one-way, I think the real effort is because there's such horrific parking problems with over-density. So there's all these tricks to try and, you know, get more parking somehow and not allow parking on one side of the street and, oh, okay. So I, I, I would say basically you, you should just leave these streets alone. They've been like this for fifty years. Because you're changing the density and the demographics of the city shouldn't mean that we should dovetail and start changing all the roads in the city. Do you ever think maybe you're bringing in too many cars, too many people, too many high-rises? You know, there's never going to be enough parking anymore. I don't care what you do. I don't care what you do. There's never going to be enough parking when everybody's in the city and COVID is showing that. I mean, people are parking on fire hydrants, on the parks. So trying to do all these knee-jerk reactions, I think you should leave the city alone. This is not a valid reason to be changing things that have been that way for fifty years. So I think you should vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm ca- I'm calling upon Rita Moreno. Please state your name and address for the record. Rita, star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, uh, I don't know if you heard me, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. Uh, anyway, uh, about this, uh, street, I think another street you should look at is Emery between Seventh and Eighth. Cause that, that's really a problem too. I know it's not about the ordinance, but that's all I wanted to tell you. I don't get a chance to call you too often. So, you're welcome.
Would, uh, Mayor, would you like me to respond?
Absolutely.
Uh, Rita, thanks for bringing that up. We actually, the city did adopt an ordinance to make that a one-way street. We're looking to coordinate maybe, um, when there's some construction on that street to be able to make that change, but that, that is also in the works. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Not seeing any other hands raised. A motion to close the
Move to close Quinn.
Second Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, motion to adopt Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-six.
Move to adopt. Kendall.
Second Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing chapter seven of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding traffic and parking regulations. Do we have a pre- brief summary of this ordinance?
Uh, sure Melody, I can go. Oh, go ahead Mayor.
I, I could do it, but either Donna or Michael would do it better. This basically increases the amount of streets that will be have alternate side parking so we can sweep them more. But Michael, Donna, go ahead.
I don't have anything else to add.
Donna, were you gonna? Okay, I was just gonna add that, um, the street, uh, alternate side parking regulations are under review all the time by the Parking Committee and with feedback from our Public Works Department. And these additional streets were identified as, uh, needing alternate side parking. And they are, um, Berg Street between Asbury Avenue and Fifth Avenue, Church Street between Prospect Avenue and Asbury Avenue and Monroe Avenue between Pine Street and Memorial Drive.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-seven?
Move to open Clayton.
Second Chapman.
Second Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, uh, members of the public may participate in the meeting by using the raise hand function on your computer or by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Your comments or questions must be about the ordinance being presented for the public hearing. The ordinance is now, the public hearing is now open on twenty twenty dash twenty-seven. I'm in calling upon four zero two six. Please state your name and address for the record. Four zero two six, star six to unmute yourself. Four zero two six. All right, um, shall I move on to someone else?
Yes.
Okay, I am calling upon Ernest McNolley. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Ernest McNolley, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, apartment five D, the Sand Tender, Asbury Park, New Jersey. So, uh, uh, the Deputy City Manager mentioned, uh, Pine, uh, uh, not far from Memorial Drive. And I, I'd just like to know why Pine Street and between Memorial and Pine and a few stro- uh, streets to the north and south are getting so much attention these days. They're getting like bump, uh, uh, speed bumps and special signs and electronic, uh, um, speed signs and, and now, you know, extra cleaning. Do you think anybody from the city or on the council lives in that area? I mean, it's just not fair. How about the rest of the dirty city? When do we count? Why does Pine and Fourth and Fifth on that side seem to get everything? Well, look who lives there. Half the council and mayor. Why is that, Mayor? Why do you get everything? How about the rest of us? We need speed bumps over on Park at Deal Lake Drive by the Sand Tender. Why do you get them all? Why does the Fire Marshal and Kendall and Deputy Mayor Quinn get them all? When do we get speed bumps? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next.
Not seeing any other hands raised. Uh, motion to close the public hearing on twenty twenty dash twenty-seven?
Move to close. Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Moore.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed on ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-seven. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-seven?
Move to adopt, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ken?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Well.
Yeah, sorry. No, sorry, it was on you. Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-eight, which is an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, amending ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty-one relating to the implementation and the collection of development fees as codified in Chapter two, Section eighty-eight of the Asbury Park City Code. Can I ask for a brief summary of this ordinance before we open it up to a public hearing?
Sure, Melody. Uh, this ordinance was orig- originally adopted in December of twenty eighteen and this allows for the city to collect development fees, uh, on properties. Um, it was approved, um, for implementation in September of twenty twenty. And the reason why it is on the agenda tonight for, um, for revision is when this was adopted back in twenty eighteen, this allowed for an assess- assessment to be done for residential property. Um, the intent of this by council was not to impose this on residents, but to impose this fee on, uh, development of commercial properties. This ordinance removes the, um, assessment on the, um, residential properties from this ordinance.
Does that complete your comments?
It does.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on twenty twenty dash twenty-eight?
Move to open, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Members of the public may participate by, in the public hearing by dialing star nine on your phone or the raised hand function on your computer. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Your comments or questions must be about the ordinance being presented for the public hearing. I am calling upon Ernest McNolli. Please state your name and address for the record.
All right, Kendall, keep laughing. So I'd like to say I, I agree with the removal from the ordinance of the development fee on, I, I believe what you're talking about is homeowners and residents as opposed to developers. Is that not correct?
Yes, residential properties, the assessment, when not the.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I think, I think you did a great thing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not, not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meeting to the public on twenty twenty dash twenty-eight?
Uh, Mel- Melody, I apologize. Maureen Nevin, uh, still having an issue raising her hand and would like to speak.
Okay.
Let me just unmute her.
Sure. Maureen?
Maureen Nevin, Deal Lake Court, Asbury Park. I, um, I have to explain here. I, I don't have those options at the bottom of my screen. I don't know why not, um, but it doesn't give the raise the hand, uh. It may be that it's not, just not letting me see that far down. I have one row of, of options and it's not included in there. Um, what I, I wanted to, what's that? Sorry.
If I may, Maureen, I think if you, if you click the participants list, I believe there is a raised hand option at the bottom of the list there, but I'm not sure because I don't see what you're seeing.
Oh, stupid, because actually it ju- it just, it just allows me to invite people to join, you know, to make comments.
Okay.
You know, I don't think it's in my, uh, my purview to do that, you know? Um, so this, uh, this twenty twenty twenty-eight, um, can you, can you be more specific about, uh, what property this involves?
So, so Maureen, th- this is the ordinance that allows for us to collect fees to put into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
The what, I'm sorry, can you repeat?
The Affordable Housing Trust Fund that was also just recently created. So if you recall, about six months ago, the city had dropped, adopted eight ordinances that required, um, developers to provide affordable hous- housing throughout the city. So this was, is in conjunction with that. And another, uh, another aspect of this that allows the city to collect a percentage of each development and put that money into a, an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that can be used to provide money to affordable housing within the city. So when this ordinance was done back in twenty eighteen, there was a provision in here that also placed this assessment on a property owner. So for example, if you were to put a shed in your backyard and, and increase the value of your property, you would have had to pay this additional fee. That's being removed from the ordinance, so it will not be put upon the residents for improving their property.
Okay, so I'd like to ask you then, um, has, has, since the adoption in two thousand and eighteen, have there been monies collected in?
No. No, so the judge just, um, I think approved this in September of twenty twenty. And Fred, I, you know, please jump in because I wasn't around when all this went on. So, and we also, also had permission set, to set up the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Everything is in place now and once this, we can start collecting.
It's a shame, I mean, two years is a long time.
Well, no, it, it wasn't, it wasn't the city, Maureen. It was the, the, the judge had to approve it and she didn't approve it until September twenty-third, twenty twenty. So nothing to do with the city. And Fred, if you want to give more background, um.
I didn't say the city, I just said it's a shame to.
Yeah, yeah.
Worth of investments in, in this trust.
But we didn't have everything in place anyway in twenty eighteen, so we couldn't have put the fund. We had to have the trust fund set up and other things.
I'll see.
And Donna, this is Fred Raffetto. Your statement is correct. We, we weren't able to implement the ordinance until we received approval from the Superior Court of New Jersey and approval was received in September of twenty twenty.
And Fred, do you know what held up the judge all that time?
Um, that the city had to file the declaratory judgment action, uh, which I will speak to when we get to the rent control ordinance regarding the city's Affordable Housing Compliance Plan. Um, and then the matter had to be reviewed and approved by, uh, the judge who handles Mount Oral matter, matters for, uh, Monmouth County.
Was that because of some, uh, objection to it? Maybe from?
No, we did not have any objection.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, I am calling upon Felicia Simmons. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, um, ten thirty-four Soul Avenue, Asbury Park. Um, just, um, a little clarity. Um, when you mean commercial, you also mean commercial residential, commercial. So say if it's a high-rise of residential apartment, um, they still collect fees on those apartments, correct?
Yeah, it was renovations, yeah, it was renovations or additions to any single-family or two-family residence. That's what was removed. Everything else is fair game.
All right, thank you very much, just clarifying.
Thanks, Felicia.
No problem.
Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the public hearing on twenty twenty dash twenty-eight? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close. Second, Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed on ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-eight. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-eight?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Clay, Kendall? Councilmember Kendall. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-nine, which is an ordinance establishing, establishing salary ranges for employees of the city of Asbury Park. Um, and I'm going to ask for a brief summary of this ordinance.
Uh, thanks, Melody. Um, as the mayor stated earlier, this is just an ordinance that we're required to do by law that sets the ranges of salaries for our municipal employees.
Does that complete your comments?
It does.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public on twenty twenty dash twenty-nine?
Move to open.
Second, Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Members of the public may participate in the public hearing by dialing star nine on your phone or the raised hand feature on your computer. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Your comments or questions must be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I'm calling upon Ernest McNolli. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Ernest McNolli, four hundred Deal Lake Drive Apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, the Sandtender. Uh, so being here as a taxpayer homeowner for, uh, fourteen years, uh, I get to know people and, uh, some employees and officials and relative to salaries, police, firemen, et cetera. And i- it just seems to me comparatively, since I was born in this area and I know a lot of municipalities, that Asbury is just hiring too many people. Uh, one person gets hired like a city manager and then they're in for a while and then they want a full-time deputy city manager. And then they want a full-time CFO and they want, well, what exactly was the original purpose of the city manager? To do all those things? It's a small city with fifteen thousand residents. Forget the guests and everybody else. And why should the fifteen thousand people have to pay for all these extra employees and salaries that are generated by all these ten, twenty, thirty, forty thousand people that parade in here to get drunk and drugs and commit crime? And we have to pay the bill? It doesn't make sense. You should probably enforce the law before you start increasing salaries because we don't need that much. What do we have, a hundred police already? There's only fifteen thousand people here. You know, look at our fire department. We're the highest paid in the county, all paid. Long Branch, Neptune, everybody has volunteer. Really, wh- why do we have to pay the most for everything? I mean, this is a poor city. Don't like it? It's the truth. Look at the facts. Everything's bonded, hocked, it's on state subsidy for generations. And now because you're making a few dollars with some of these developers and stuff, uh, uh, all of a sudden, let's spend money. What money? Where's it coming from? Schools are broke. Everything's broke. And yet we're buying new cars, we're buying, re- raising salaries. Let's hire seven more people to work in the code department. Let's hire ten more, uh, EMS. Let's get seven more ambulances. I mean, please, please. Let, let reason prevail. It's a tiny little city. Why should the few taxpayers, homeowners have to foot the bill for, for all these undesirable criminals that flock into this city, right? And the services that they need. Drug overdoses, they need EMS. Alcohol overdoses, they need EMS, you know? Oh, fighting, shooting, stabbing, they need EMS.
I feel like we might be getting off the ordinance here, Fred.
Well, no, it's about salary. No, it isn't. And who is that, the city manager?
No, it's John Moore and I agree, you're strange.
Well, who, no, who spoke first?
I did, I spoke.
No, no, before you.
Quinn spoke, Ernest. Ernest, it's me.
Okay, Mr.
Oh, yeah.
And Mr. McNolli, that's beside the point. Please stick to the topic of the ordinance.
Okay, have a good night. I figured.
Thank you. Uh, Rita Moreno, please state your name and address for the record. Star six to unmute yourself, Rita.
Okay, uh, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I just want to know how many employees is under this ordinance?
So I guess Rita, if I ask you, are, are all these positions filled? Absolutely not. These are just positions that we have under our civil service that we're allowed to fill. The positions are only filled when they're budgeted for. So just for a point of reference, this year, we actually lost a few employees due to retirement. Um, and we haven't filled those positions. We've actually, actually consolidated positions and we've probably saved about over a hundred thousand dollars in positions. Um, we're reorganizing the, um, different departments right now. We'll be realizing some more savings. So these are just merely a listing that we're obligated to do of all the positions that are in the city. Uh, most of these, the majority of these are in a union. Um, and when a union gets a raise, that's why the, the maximum needs to be adjusted each year from time to time.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Not seeing, not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meeting on twenty twenty dash twenty-eight?
Move to close.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty dash twenty-nine.
Move to close, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-nine?
Move to adopt, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
I'm gonna vote yes, but I just want to say before I vote yes, uh, Mr. McNolli, I respect your comments, but, uh, any town our size, any town our budget without a full-time CFO, which happened in the past and it led us down the wrong road, is a mistake. That's just my personal opinion. Mr. McNolli, I thank you for your personal opinion, so my vote is yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, we now on to ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty, which is an ordinance establishing a rent leveling and stabilization board as well as rules that regulate the price of rent and the rate of rent increase for certain rental houses within the said city of Asbury Park. And we will have a statement by our city attorney, Frederick Raffetta.
Thank you, Melody. The city of Asbury Park has had a long history of promoting and creating affordable housing. Throughout the city's history, as many as sixteen hundred and eighty-seven affordable dwelling units have been created within the city through the combined efforts of the city, the Asbury Park Housing Authority and various nonprofit affordable housing developers. Additionally, the city is slated to receive a total of seven million in funding pursuant to the waterfront redevelopment agreement as executed in two thousand and two, which funds are to be utilized specifically for affordable housing and community initiatives. Moreover, the city has had an active housing rehabilitation program that has operated out of its Community Development Department for many years. In December of two thousand and seventeen, the city adopted a comprehensive master plan reexamination report, which reaffirmed housing objectives and goals for the city, which included a heavy emphasis on creating affordable housing. Following the adoption of the reexamination report, the city adopted the Development Fees Ordinance and this ordinance has been formally approved by the Superior Court. The ordinance provides for the generation of funding as a result of new development and such funding shall be dedicated to the provision of affordable housing. In February of two thousand and nineteen, the Planning Board adopted a third round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan as prepared by the city's Affordable Housing Planner, Beth McManus. This plan memorializes how the city intends to address the provision of affordable housing within the city. Thereafter, in early twenty twenty, the city formally sought approval of its Housing Element and Fair Share Plan through the filing of a declaratory judgment action before the Superior Court of New Jersey. That matter is currently pending. In April of twenty twenty, in furtherance of the goals and objectives as set forth in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, the city adopted eight separate ordinances which permit increased housing construction and require mandatory affordable housing set aside in various areas of the city in an effort to incentivize the creation of affordable housing and increase the supply of affordable and market-rate housing in the city. Throughout this time, city officials have been engaged in an ongoing and cooperative dialogue with the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition and the Fair Share Housing Center. During the course of these discussions, the issue of rent control was raised. The city was interested in determining if or how rent control could address concerns about housing affordability and stability and how it could be applied in Asbury Park. As a result, in or about July of twenty twenty, the city council formally authorized Ms. McManus to commence a review of rent control issues and whether and to what extent rent control initiatives may be advantageous. and whether and to what extent rent control initiatives may be advantageous to the city. Ms. McManus had started her work on this project. However, during the intervening month, her attention was required to be focused on opposing efforts made by various developers who were attempting to intervene in the city's Affordable Housing Declaratory Judgment Action and to potentially provide less affordable housing than required under the ordinances adopted in April. Thereafter, on November thirteenth, 2020, an unexpected initiative petition and proposed rent stabilization ordinance was received by the city clerk's office. Petitions like this are permitted in some New Jersey municipalities like Asbury Park, which have chosen a form of government under the Faulkner Act. The Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition was involved with the preparation and circulation of the initiative petition and the proposed ordinance. Pursuant to the requirements of the law, the city clerk thereafter reviewed the petition to determine whether it had been signed by the required number of qualified voters and was otherwise sufficient pursuant to all relevant statutory requirements. Following the review performed by the city clerk, the clerk determined that the initiative petition as submitted satisfies the requirements set forth by law. The city clerk notified the Committee of Petitioners of her determination in this regard by letter dated December third, 2020. The petition and the proposed ordinance were then forwarded by the city clerk to the mayor and council at the council meeting of December ninth, 2020. The law requires that the sending of the ordinance constitutes a first reading of the ordinance. The required public hearing is scheduled for this evening, December twenty-second, 2020. The city council has twenty days from the date the city, of the city clerk's submission of the ordinance, which occurred on December ninth, or through December twenty-ninth, 2020, to consider its adoption. The city council may only adopt the ordinance in substantially the same form as it was proposed by the petitioners or alternatively, not adopt the ordinance. The council may not make any substantive changes to the ordinance. This means no changes to what units the ordinance is applicable to, no changes to the issue of vacancy decontrol, no changes to how permitted rent increases are calculated, and no changes to the makeup of the rent control board, for just a few examples. If the city council does not adopt the ordinance within the twenty-day time period, then the law requires that the ordinance shall be submitted to the voters at a special election held in accordance with state law. The ordinance may not have any substantial amendments before it is voted on at the special election. A special election may only be avoided if, within ten days after the final adverse action is taken by the city council, or after the expiration of the twenty-day period of time allowed for such action as the case may be, a paper signed by at least four of the five members of the Committee of Petitioners is filed by the city clerk requesting that the petition be withdrawn. Upon the filing of such a request, the original petition shall cease to have any force or effect. If the council should fail to pass the ordinance within the twenty-day time period referenced earlier, and the petition is not thereafter withdrawn within the ten-day time period as just discussed, then the law would ordinarily require that the special election must be held within forty and sixty days thereafter, measured from the final date for withdrawal of the petition. That would require the special election to occur sometime toward the end of February or the early part of March. However, due to the ongoing COVID-19 public health crisis, Governor Murphy executed Executive Order Number 211 yesterday, which provides at paragraph six thereof, that in an attempt to mitigate the continued spread of the virus, no elections may be held or proceed prior to April twentieth, 2021. As such, the earliest that a special election can now be held relating to this ordinance, that is, if the city council does not pass it this evening, is April twentieth, 2021. And the dates set forth in that executive order are potentially subject to be extended out further by the governor depending upon the circumstances at that time. In any event, this evening is the scheduled date for the council to conduct a public hearing on the ordinance and to consider whether to adopt it at the conclusion of the public hearing. It is important to note again that the council is not able to amend the ordinance as submitted in any substantive fashion this evening. Moreover, it is important to note that if the council fails to adopt the ordinance, and if it is thereafter approved by the voters at the special election, then the council cannot amend or repeal it for a period of three years. The only way for any amendment or for it to be repealed would be through the submission of the matters to the vote, of the matter to the voters once again. Since the petition and the proposed ordinance were submitted, many stakeholders, including city officials, representatives of the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition, and representatives of various landlords throughout the city, have initiated and been engaged in a dialogue regarding the ordinance and its provisions. There are strong feelings on all sides of the issues presented, and there are very important issues of public policy that must be determined here. In an ideal world, all parties would have a significant period of time to discuss and vet the issues raised so that a reasoned decision regarding the ordinance could be made, which might involve a compromise between the stakeholders involved. Unfortunately, the time periods set forth in the Faulkner Act relating to ordinances submitted by initiatives are extremely aggressive, and there are no statutory provisions which allow for extensions of time, even if all parties consent. As such, the city council is faced with a difficult determination this evening on issues that will have substantial impact upon constituents and property owners within the city without having the ability to engage in the type of dialogue and study that would otherwise be advisable relating to an ordinance of this significance. At this time, I will now turn the matter over to the mayor for the conduct of the public hearing. Given that there may be many speakers who wish to voice their opinions this evening on the proposed ordinance, all speakers will be limited to a period of no longer than three minutes per speaker to address the council on the ordinance. If the speaker has not concluded his or her comments during that three-minute period, then they will be permitted to speak again at the end for an unlimited period of time, once all speakers have had the opportunity to be heard once. That way, we will not have a situation where one speaker takes up an extraordinarily long period of time and makes all other speakers wait to be heard. With that said, I now turn the matter over to Mayor Moore for the public hearing. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Fred, and I think it's very well said, and, uh, we know there's a lot of people who want to speak, so we're just asking. Keep your first remarks to the three minute, and we're not going to cut you off in mid paragraph or anything. If you go a little bit over, fine, but we just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. And again, as Fred said, uh, if you want to come back for a second bite of the apple, you can do that. So, thank you. Uh, Melody, it's on you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-30?
Move to open. I mean, Chapman?
Second.
Second, Quinn.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is now open on ordinance 2020-30. Members of the public may participate in the public hearing by dialing star nine on your phone or the raised hand feature on your computer. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments and questions about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am calling upon Charles Gormley. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the council, and I hope everyone has a he- healthy and, uh, safe holiday season. Uh, I'm an attorney representing the Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition, a member of the law firm of Brock, Eichler, and Roseland. For the past forty years, my practice has been focused on representing property owners, including tenants, in connection with rent control matters throughout the state of New Jersey. Tonight, I think your council summarized the, the difficulty of the challenge that's presented to this council. In the middle of a worldwide pandemic, the electorate, or at least a portion of the electorate of Asbury Park, has seized the power of lawmaking away from the council. And they have raised an important issue, an issue that's very important to both landlords and tenants. The difficulty with the challenge presented to the council is they presented a one-sided, ineffective, and inexpensive solution. My perspective, after many, many years of looking how rent control works in communities, is important for the council to consider. Rent control historically has never lowered rent for any tenant. Rent control has never created additional new housing. And the thing that drives the cost of housing is supply. Rent control, in fact, suppresses the supply of housing. That is why in nineteen eighty-eight, the state of New Jersey exempted new construction of rental property from municipal rent controls like the one being considered tonight. As a result of that state statute, hundreds of thousands of affordable and some not-so-affordable rental housing units have been built in the state of New Jersey. Without that exemption, they never would have been built, and rents would be even more high than they are right now. Rent control, and particularly this rent control ordinance...
One minute remaining.
Particularly this rent control ordinance removes the incentive of property owners to improve and rehabilitate their property between tenants. And the reason it does that is it controls the rent being charged by property owners to people who are currently not even living in Asbury Park. This ordinance does not contain a vacancy decontrol provision, which has been considered by many judges in the state as the ultimate safety valve in rent control ordinances. Most importantly, and for people who are worried about their property taxes in Asbury Park, rent control will assuredly shift the tax burden from the multifamily properties whose values will go down and increase the tax burden on single-family property owners and business owners. This is the time to vote this ordinance down. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you sticking to the three minutes, and again, if you want to come back later, thank you.
I am calling upon Peter Siegel. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. It's Peter Siegel, uh, Webb Street in Asbury Park. And thank you for the, the time tonight. Uh, I am part of the Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition, and I wanted to speak a little bit about the, uh, petitioner's proposed rent control ordinance and, uh, and share that the Asbury Park, Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition recognizes that this ordinance comes from a very good place in trying to help and provide assistance to some members of our community that are here now and who need it now. Um, but this ordinance was, was really rushed through, uh, the system, and it really stole the ability for all of us to have the dialogue that we need to so desperately have on this very, very important issue. And, uh, there have been some talks over the past few weeks, some Zoom calls throughout the community, and was happy to participate in those and see such a passionate participation of everyone else on those calls as well. And, uh, what we need to do is have more of those talks, and unfortunately, the way the statute works, it, it really robs us of the time to do that. Uh, what the Asbury Park Property Coalition has done is, uh, upon request from multiple parties in the city, uh, we have created our proposed, uh, draft of what we call the, uh, Asbury, Asbury Park Tenant Protection Act. And, um, this act is not a replacement ordinance for what we feel is the defective rent control proposal that's currently on the table. Um, the, the Tenant Protection Act is not rent control at all. Uh, in fact, only the petitioners, uh, uh, of the proposed rent control ordinance, which is on our agenda tonight, can propose rent control for the next three years. Asbury Park doesn't need rent control, but it certainly needs to have a solution to address stability for its long-term tenants, and that's what the Asbury Park Tenant Protection Act intends to do. And, uh, we're very serious about this, and, and even, you know, I think the seriousness of, of our position is, is further demonstrated, even in the, in the face of the S2 school funding bill and the school budget that's going to create the doubling of property taxes over the next four years anyway, that we're, we're able to put forth the Asbury Park Tenant Protection Act, uh, and tenants can have the stability, uh, that they need without us having to adopt this very bad rent control ordinance, which will have far-reaching effects on so many aspects of our city businesses, homeowners, tourism and visitors, uh, maintenance of housing stock and quality of housing stock will go down. So I urge you all to vote no on this ordinance tonight, and I do thank you all for your time, and happy holidays to everybody. Be safe.
Uh, thank you, and again, I appreciate you, uh, yielding any future time so everybody can speak on this in a good fashion. Thank you.
I am calling upon the Harris family. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Melody, before we unmute them, um, they just sent the note to let us know that there are two speakers actually in this household, so I think we'll just have them go back to back.
Okay, okay. Um, Harris family, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, uh, my name is Nicole Harris. Address seventeen Ridge Avenue. Um, I grew up in the city of Asbury Park. Um, and what I have recognized, so, try to say this within three minutes. Um, growing up here in a time in the eighties and the nineties, after the uprising that happened in the seventies, um, I loved growing up here, okay? Uh, it was a beach that was really unbothered, you know? We didn't have a lot of tourists and things like that, and so we had like our own little private beach when I was growing up. Um, and you grew up here knowing that this town had great potential. I always knew that, growing up. This town had great potential. And we longed and waited for the day that we would have the resources we needed um, for this town to thrive, okay? And so it's good to see the town thriving. Uh, but what is discouraging is to see that as the town is thriving, there seems to be an intentional effort to push out um, and to further marginalize, uh, people that have lived here for a very long time, being, uh, the working class, uh, the working poor, uh, black and brown people. Um, yeah, tenant, uh, protection sounds great, uh, but for a community that has been being gentrified for fifteen years, where was that protection at for the past fifteen years, or, or has it only come up since this ordinance? Uh, that would protect, um, tenants and, and, and has land, um, property owners feeling a certain kind of way, and my family owns property in this community as well. Uh, what I want to say to the council tonight is that I do hope that you vote for this ordinance. Why? Because I don't want us to look back. Um, I want this council to be on the right side of history.
One minute remaining.
Um, we look back at history books now, and we can see the flaws that, uh, coloni- uh, colonizing, um, certain areas, uh, did to the indigenous people, right? I consider myself to be an indigenous person of Asbury Park. Meaning I was here before it was flourishing and thriving and before people felt like, oh, it was the place to go. I was here. I grew up here. And it is heartbreaking to see people be pushed out who were here, who stayed here, who stuck here, uh, through the hard times. I do not want Mayor Moore to be known as the mayor who was manipulated by Madison Marquette. I do not want Amy Quinn to be known as the gentrification queen. You guys are better than that. So I hope that you will vote for things that will protect all people in Asbury Park. It, and I know some people are thinking this ordinance was rushed through, but for me, it is coming too late because for the marginalized community in Asbury Park, we do not have the time to wait.
Thank you, Nicole. Again, I appreciate you, uh, yielding future time to the next bit of person.
Okay, I'm calling upon the second member of the Harris family. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Daniel Harris, seventeen Ridge Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Um, my greatest concern is as we watch communities grow, not just in Asbury Park, but throughout this country. Property that was once looked down upon, people are now taking advantage of and redeveloping it. That's fine, okay? But to chase people out who has spent their entire lives in the community for the advantage of other people is wrong. It's almost like the strong survive, the weak die. I've talked to people who no longer can even afford the property taxes on their house, so they've had to move out of Asbury. That's not what it's about. We talk about being a diversified community, um, of muni- which actually shows different colors. Or it seems like one color or two colors, the blacks and the Latinos, are somehow being chased out for the fact that they cannot afford to pay rent. And I, and I say to the people sitting on the, on the board, you sit here and you say, well, we don't need rent control. We don't need this. We don't need that. Those, those things come to roost. Those things come to roost. They may not be coming for you today, but they'll be coming for you maybe tomorrow, okay? Well, one day you'll look up and your taxes will be more than you can afford to pay in your retirement years, and you'll have to leave the city of Asbury, a city that you love, okay? Yes, I own property in Asbury, I own property in Neptune. And one thing I don't take advantage of on my tenants, you can have a profitable business and still make money without gouging your tenants. At this time, we even, property owners are actually suffering because if we have tenants who aren't paying rent, you can't evict them because of the pandemic. Nobody's lending a hand to us at that point. Nobody says that you can't charge what the market will bear, but when the market-
One minute remaining.
For the gentle, thank you. When the market gentrifies people of color and gentrifies poor people, that's not fair. If people want to live in rich neighborhoods, all they have to do is go over the deal or interlaken. Asbury should be a community where everyone is welcome and not chased out. And that's what I have to say. So I think that you should vote for this rent control ordinance to save those who don't want to leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny.
I am calling upon Jennifer. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, I'm Jennifer Sirwa. I am a merchant in Asbury Park at 603 Madison Avenue. Speaking for myself, however, I will say that I am a member of the Dialogue Group, if you're familiar with that. So with that said, I'm gonna make a general overview and then ask some specific questions to which I would like answers to. So my general overview is, I hope everybody in this room does recognize that we are where we are with this proposed rent control ordinance because we recognize centuries and decades of deliberate legal land and property ownership by white men, which was then softened, you know, and became possible for women to own property. My great-grandmother is one of them from here in Asbury in Ocean Grove. But the redlining, the legal, federal permissible use of redlining continued to keep property ownership out of the reach of poor people. So where we are today is we're scrambling for rent equity for poor people who can't pick themselves up by their bootstraps because they don't even have boots. To that end, I don't believe that this particular ordinance is the correct answer. But what needs to be discussed is, council, where in your master plan did you, and why did you ignore your civic duty to recognize the pending storm of consequences of gentrification? Why didn't you recognize it and allocate resources to mitigate it? That's a question. Council, why didn't you approve the proclamation that the Dialogue Group submitted to you that recognize-
One minute remaining.
That recognized the systemic racism that brings us to this horrible unequal situation that we are in vis-à-vis housing and rent and et cetera? Yeah, so those are my two questions. And again, I have to underscore that I don't want this particular ordinance because it does create in blue, Hatfields and McCoys, property owners, landlords and tenants. I suggest we have a much more robust conversation about alternatives. And I would like answers to my questions. And thank you so much for listening to me.
Okay, I thank you. And some of your questions stray from like the ordinance tonight. We can get you those answers down the road. I don't think tonight's the place to do it. And again, I don't think you listed your home address, which is Ocean Grove. So again, thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, I am calling upon Kathleen Muma. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you. I'm Kathleen Muma, 1104 Sunset Avenue, Asbury Park. I would like to just share a personal experience I had with rent stabilization when I lived in another town. About 15 years ago, I had a period of my life where I was very financially unstable. And I was living in this dump apartment in, you know, with several roommates in Hoboken. And I remember my rent was, my portion of the rent was 900 a month. And when I went to renew my lease after a year, the landlord said it was going to go up to 1,020. And that was my monthly grocery budget at the time. And it was, you know, I had no idea what I was going to do. I was flat broke. Luckily, I called City Hall and in Hoboken, they did have a rent stabilization ordinance in place. And they told me that I, that my landlord was only permitted to raise the rent at the same rate of Consumer Price Index increased. So I went back, I was able to go back to my landlord and insist on that. And my rent was only raised like $20 a month. And that stabilization at that time in my life meant all the difference to me. It meant keeping some of my belongings instead of selling them. It meant being able to eat for, you know, every night. And it makes a real difference to families here in our community today. Every dollar counts. You know, it doesn't seem like limiting rent increases from year to year is going to solve all of our housing problems that we face, but it's a start and it's a step we can take. And I would like you to know, council, that I support rent stabilization efforts that are also coupled with promoting-
One minute remaining.
Thank you. That are also, I support rent stabilization efforts that are also coupled with promoting affordable units in our housing supply and that are also coupled with economic development programs and job training programs that can lift incomes across the board and promote economic mobility throughout our community. So I would urge you to consider this ordinance or other stabilization efforts that you can. Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Thank you and happy holidays to you.
I am calling upon six zero, I'm sorry.
Melody, before we get too far, Maureen Nevin has, again, issues with her raised hand and she did ask a little while back to be recognized. So I don't know, you want to go to her next, maybe?
Sure.
Okay. One second. Maureen?
Maureen?
We've got like thirty, we've got like thirty hands up so we can come back to her.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay.
Maureen, please state your name and address for the record.
Maureen Nevin, Dela Court, Asbury Park. Okay, I'd like to say that, you know, we've been hearing a lot from landlords and we never hear from, Partisak, who is still actually sitting in this kind of shadowed form on Zoom calls. He's kind of a phantom. And I've always admired his work and I'm a big fan of Partisak. Even though he doesn't like this ordinance, which I think, you know, something has to happen. That's why it was happened, okay? You may not like it, but it's better than waiting another 15 years. No one wants to do it. But I noticed that the landlords keep referring to those people who may need help. Excuse me? I can't stay in my house. My house is up for sale, okay? Because I can't afford the taxes. And I do, because I'm an agent now, I do appreciate the tax freeze that we're able to get the seniors that, but you have to pay those taxes for a full nine, 12 months before you get the freeze money back. And that's what a lot of people can't do. You know, they have to borrow it. When they get the check, they pay off the loan. This is not sustainable. These rates aren't, the cost of living here is tremendous, okay? And I think that what we need to do is get a feel for a level playing field here. I think the opinions of the council members are very important to the future of this ordinance and any kind of resolution. It's already been endorsed by more than 700 Asbury Park voters. So I think they may want to know which council member is voting on this ordinance tonight actually have tenants or rental properties themselves. We need to know who we're talking to. Since we don't have video, you'll have to give your names with your answers so we know the answers. But we have a right to that. And the number of voters who rent versus landlords who vote in Asbury Park, because these were 700 Asbury Park voters who got us this far. How many votes did you get from the landlords? I think you need to talk among yourselves about that, but I would like the answer to that question. And I'll yield my time to the next person.
Thank you. Who's next?
Calling upon 6082. Please state your name and address for the record. 6082, star six to unmute yourself. 6082, please state your name and address for the record.
No response, Melody.
Okay, we'll now move on. I am calling upon Ron S. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, God, skip me. Oh.
Hello?
Hi, this is Ron Simoncini. I spoke before. I'm from the Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition. I appreciate the time. I think in response to a couple of comments we've heard before, first and foremost, people recognizing that they don't have control over their property taxes is also recognizing that this ordinance is unworkable. It's impossible for anybody to control the natural increases in expenses and tax insurance and other things because there are people who are in need, despite the fact that we might be, and we of course are, very sensitive to the issues that some people are facing in their budget, and those need to be addressed. That's no excuse to pass a terrible ordinance. We know that there is social inequity. We know that there certainly is social injustice. But to create even greater social injustice makes no sense. This ordinance, for example, has some very basic flaws in it. It wasn't drafted with any knowledge about how rent control ordinances are actually administered, how rent regulation works. For example, as a beginning point, it says that four tenants and three landlords should be appointed to a board. Well, there's no equal protection there. You can't leave four tenants in control of a majority vote for every tenant issue that comes up. Where's the fairness in that? And that's the issue here. And the caller before who said, well, gee, there's more tenants than there are landlords. Does that mean you should just give everything that the landlords have to the tenants? We don't do that around here. That's not how this country works. We're trying to create equities for everybody here. This law, for example, forgets to acknowledge that there's an exemption for properties that were built after 1988 in New Jersey. Under this law, there's no mechanism for those properties to exempt themselves from rent control if they didn't have the foresight to notify the building inspector when they got their CVO that they want-
One minute remaining.
That they wanted to be exempted when there was no rent control law to exempt them from. To the folks who talked about gentrification, if you want to avoid gentrification, you have to avoid rent control. Every study, and I'll point you in particular to the Brookings Institute study by Anthony Downs, demonstrates that the people who are most vulnerable are the people who benefit least from rent control. It's the stable households who have stable incomes, who can go and apply for apartments and get them. Those are not people who are in financial need. And so rent control doesn't protect any of this. So I'm sure that I'm going to end up coming back and I appreciate the attention to the few minutes. I do think that there is a way to get to a tenant protection in Asbury Park. Unfortunately, this ordinance can't be passed. If it is passed, half of it's going to get thrown out in court after it's passed. We need to figure out how to protect tenants, but not make it so that our tax base in Asbury Park gets compromised and the conditions of our properties get compromised just because we want to do something. We can do something else other than this.
Thank you. And Melody, before you go to the next one, I think it was a gentleman, the 6082, I think he got back on, but he's way down at the bottom of the list.
Okay.
So I think he started, tried to talk. So if we could try him again.
Sure. I'm calling upon 6082. 6082, please state your name and address for the record. 6082, star six to unmute. Okay.
Do you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and, yes, we can. Please state your name and address.
My name is Mitchell Khan, 177 Upper Lakeview Avenue, Ringwood, New Jersey. I am the vice president and director of organizing for the New Jersey Tenants Organization since 1977 and been on the board since 1972. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm glad to speak to you. I have been involved in the crafting of rent control ordinances in the state of New Jersey for the past 50 years. There are 104 municipalities in the state of New Jersey that have rent control. Rent control ordinances are working well in all of those municipalities. I think it's a little bit disingenuous for the landlords now to say, oh, they could now live with a rent control ordinance when like seven months ago, when this was becoming an issue in Asbury Park, no one said anything about being in favorable rent control. No one on the council took it upon themselves to introduce a rent control ordinance and negotiate a rent control ordinance that would be acceptable to everyone. No one did anything. And when the tenants finally took initiative and got this going, now all of a sudden, the tenants are being accused of trying to like rush this thing through. That's not fair. That being said, there is nothing unconstitutional about this ordinance that's been introduced. It is legal. I can't, I don't see anything in this ordinance that would be thrown out in court. The person that said that new construction would not be exempt from rent control unless they spoke to the building inspector about getting a certificate of occupancy and asking for an exemption at that point is not true. Any property that has been built since 1983 in Asbury Park is exempt from rent control for a 30-year period, period. That's the law. The landlord doesn't have to do anything other than to document that the property was built, you know, within that time period. So I would urge you to like support this rent control ordinance. Rent control is designed to protect tenants that are in the municipality. It does not create new affordable housing. It does not reduce rents. But what it does is, in a gentrifying market, prevent the absolute practice of rent gouging to get tenants out. So I would really urge you to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm now calling upon Carrie Butch. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. Listen, guys, I just, I know each and every one of you. I know that we have all been working on things together for many, many years in Asbury Park, but this is not something that just popped up. It's 20 years in the making. When you came, when I came, when Amy came, we came when there was affordable housing in Asbury Park. We all got in. We all have affordable houses. Either we bought them or we inherited them. So this is a way of keeping everybody in the community right now under hyper-gentrification. Because, you know, the other thing is, is I want to talk a little bit about the Property Owners Association. The Property Owners Association is not a longstanding, community-based organization in Asbury Park. They just popped up and they are talking about them being a property association when they are a landlord's association. They are not a property owners' association. I own property. Many people on this call that are supporting- Many people on this call that are supporting their neighbors and friends staying here and 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 having not these outrageous things. Most landlords that we've talked to are amenable to rent stabilization. And they see where where are where the economy is going, and they realize that they're not going to you know, they're not going to be able to keep people in. There are some people that want to raise rents unconscionably because people are moving here from Sandy. Moving here, and I'm sorry. I'm totally wrong. People are moving because of COVID from New York and taking our apartment. So so yes, we have a problem here. And I do want to say that I I can never stop reminding you that we were promised in the waterfront redevelopment plan. We were promised affordable housing inside and outside the waterfront redevelopment zone.
One minute remaining.
I see, Melody. Waterfront redevelopment took away 453 rental units, 22 single-family homes, 18 businesses, and two churches. We have. We were told we were sold a bill of goods under a corrupt city manager. I believe that you guys are not corrupt. I believe that you're good people. But at this point, we have to, we have to say enough is enough. You're going to have to take a hard stand. This didn't didn't just pop up. 700 people signed the petition and a whole lot more would sign it. If if we don't want to run around during COVID. We want you to pass this ordinance, and I thank you in advance for 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 being amazing and being on the side of the people in Asbury Park. I thank you in advance. John, Amy, Eileen, Yvonne, and Jesse. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. Next.
I'm calling upon 3444. Please state your name and address for the record.
Derek Minow Bloom, 1108 First Avenue. Well, happy holidays, everybody. A fun thing to do during the holidays. Thanks for everybody's time and work. I want to start out by saying that Asbury is known and seen as a progressive city. And I have seen the landlords really take down our ordinance. I am a member of Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition, have drafted this ordinance. And I have not seen the landlords provide a progressive affordable housing person to speak on their behalf. Most of the people that have spoken on their behalf are actually conservative housing advocates and normally side with landlords and landlord rights, not tenant rights. So I want folks to know that this ordinance was designed by progressive affordable housing folks from all over. We read, we got advice. And we might not have the perfect ordinance. There might be things here or there. But no progressive affordable housing advocate has critiqued us for the lack of vacancy decontrol. Actually, in the fair housing world, vacancy decontrol is actually seen or spoken as as VD, that it eats away at tenants' rights. And it takes away their rights. And I think we have seen from the last 15 years specifically, not all landlords, but a lot of landlords have not been super worried about tenants' rights and keeping rents low. Matter of factly, they've gotten higher and higher and even seen this 30% higher here in Asbury than anyone else or anywhere else. And this summer, I think with the murder of George Floyd, Black Lives Matter became very popular. And I see Black Lives Matter signs on people's lawns. I see them on businesses. But we can't use Black Lives Matter as just a phrase. It's time to say Black Lives Matter with our vote and with justice. And this ordinance, I believe, says that Black Lives Matter, that Black Lives deserve to stay in this town. And yes, we recognize that rent stabilization doesn't create affordable housing. We did that with the last eight ordinances we helped with. But it keeps rents not from rising, rising, rising. So to the council, to landlords, to the business owners, to the community, if we say Black Lives Matter, we can do that with this ordinance as is. It's progressive and truly will help tenants. So I advise that we pass this ordinance tonight. And if the ordinance does not pass, I do look forward to hearing proposals. But I only want to hear progressive proposals that will be for tenants. They'll keep tenants' rights. They will be for justice. And thank you, everyone, for your time and your work. And I hope you're well. That's it.
Thank you, Derek. Next.
I'm calling upon Jen Kubias. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jen Kubias, 614 Seventh Avenue. A longtime renter, and I'm not affiliated with any group. I've lived on both sides of this town, even I'm on the east side now. I work here. I walk to work. And in many ways, those two things make me an anomaly. Nicole and Daniel Harris's testimony honestly should be compelling enough. But I will put my two cents in as well, which is, you know, when you allow gentrification and these skyrocketing rents to occur the way that they are, you're disrupting the families who have lived here for generations and have built their social networks here and their families, their churches, their schools. This is community. That is community. Community is not tourism. And the landlord saying that they're all for equity while pinching people for exorbitant profits. Not profit. I get it. Everyone has to make a buck. But exorbitant profit because it's what the market will bear is ridiculous. It's not equity. It's greed. Nonseasonal and full-time renters keep this town and the surrounding towns in service as teachers, health aides, restaurant workers in this town, through all the restaurants that everyone loves to go to. Why is Asbury okay with this? We should not even have to lean on the stress of the pandemic. This was an issue before COVID. So although surely you can understand how the pandemic has massively exacerbated the issue. We cannot wait another six months to open this up to election and drag on. We're already late. But don't be too late. I'm imploring the council to vote yes and stabilize rents now. Please don't be late in your service to the people of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon 3966. Please state your name and address for the record. 3966.
Yes, hi, Dana Divino. I live at 600 Cookman Avenue. So I wanted to start off by thanking the council for the explanation. It helped me to understand the Faulkner statute and the fact that there's really not much time to speak on this. Clearly, it needs further discussion, further information, and and the need to work together to find a comprehensive solution. I definitely am learning a lot from the people that are speaking. It is not the tenant's fault, nor those that brought this forward, that it's rushed. It's not on them, and they certainly you know, deserve the right to have their voices heard. The Harris family was just, you know, very articulate and impassioned, and I want to thank them for speaking. And also a couple of the other first speakers, again, also were very helpful with their information. So I would like to say. So I'm an owner in town. I moved in and purchased property. I I'm also just to piggyback what the last speaker said. I'm a teacher. I worked in the restaurant industry for a very long time. And I moved in when I was much, much younger with a friend. We purchased property. My husband also purchased property here. This was in like 2009. We have a small business in town. You know, we have a lot, a lot of roots here, and I certainly think that this discussion is long overdue. I would be to speak to someone just two speakers ago, I would be a progressive voice on the side of the landlords, and I would love to get involved, and I apologize for not being involved or aware sooner. That is, that was ignorant on my part, but I do think that there's more clarification needed. The gentleman with 30 years of experience on rent control, he's saying go. He's saying this needs to happen. And I feel like up until this evening, that was not my understanding. And so again, I just, I I would urge. Sorry, I'm going to articulately ask the question to the council. How and when can we do a better job at discussing this and representing all sides? Certainly the tenants and certainly the need to not rank out.
One minute remaining.
And how, thank you, can we have a better, more comprehensive solution to this that that doesn't get pushed that, you know, that doesn't get pushed down the road? Because of course, people need stabilization and and security now. Is it possible to answer that question now? Or does that have to be discussed at another time? Thank you.
Thank you. I think that will be discussed either later tonight or another time. Again, thank you for your comments. And next.
I'm calling upon Bill McElin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I my name is William McElin. I live at 1701 Ocean Avenue. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You've got a local example here of a national problem called inequality. Our country has come to a point for whatever reasons where we're riddled with a great deal of inequality. And those that are unequal are beginning to speak out. And those that are more equal really have to carefully listen. You, as members of the council, certainly did not bring about this rental problem. Years of inaction in addressing the inequalities brought this resolution to your table. It's not your fault. Actually, it's not anyone's fault. It's not a perfect resolution. But you show me one of your resolutions or ordinances that is perfect. We're always working to improve them, and that's what will happen here. I very strongly urge you to approve this resolution. Think about it with your head. But also vote about it with your heart. This resolution can be modified over a period of time. Despite what you've heard here, there are some been some pretty strong statements.
One minute remaining.
Despite what you've heard here tonight, the world's not going to end if you pass this resolution. And it needs to be readdressed or modified in the future. So remember carefully what you've heard tonight. You've heard some very intellectual comments. You've heard some very intellectual comments. But they have been spoken from the heart. And they're addressing, they're attempting to address a need with an unmeant need which you have to deal with. So vote to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Melody.
Linda, I'm calling upon Linda. Please state your name and address for the record. Linda? Star six to unmute yourself. Linda? I will move on to someone else. Okay, I'm going to move on to. I'm moving on to Andrea Goldman. Andrea Goldman, please state your name and address for the record.
Andrea Goldman, 307th Avenue. Okay, hi, I'm a petitioner, and I am a member of the Housing Coalition. So I just urge you to everyone here to pay attention to who is talking about the needs of the people at stake, the renters, and who is just talking about money? And who is talking about investments? Because if you look at the ordinance, which has been out for months, there's pages and pages of whereas, right? Where it says whereas, you know, X, X percent of people here renters. And it mentions unaffordability and systemic racism, and those are truths. These are facts. And that's what this ordinance is addressing. So anybody who is saying that they understand what people are going through, but I want to talk about my investment. But I want to talk about me being a property owner. It's kind of beside the point. Because those people's needs are already addressed, and it's their wants that we're considering. They want more money. You know, if you want to own property, that's fine. You don't have to rent it to a person. If you want to invest, that's okay. But nobody, you don't need somebody to live in your investment. These are people, and their needs aren't being met. And you know, I said it on the call last week, you know, you can judge a person by how they treat the most vulnerable among us. And in Asbury Park, we have an outsized proportion of people who are vulnerable. And I see a lot of council resolutions and people supporting the people whose needs are met. And your job on council is to represent us. You ran for reelection promising to be our representative. You're supposed to be on our side, on our team. And it's really disappointing that you're even considering not voting for this. You know, landlords have all the power, and the idea that, you know, having one more tenant on the board is going to mess with everything is ludicrous. And it's insulting because this is the minimum that we can do to balance.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. It's the minimum that we can do. You know, you have to demonstrate that you care about this with action. You can say one thing, but you have to do something. And if the time isn't now, honestly, like, when is it? There's a pandemic and an eviction crisis. And you knew this was coming. Years ago, you wanted to give affordable housing set aside for middle-income people making 83,000 or above. You knew. You even said, you guys said it, that you want to make sure in five years, people making that much could afford to live here. You were literally aware of this, that it was going to be so expensive. People in middle income couldn't afford it. Well, we're talking about people who make half that. And you have the chance to help them. And you know, and I echo what other people said, that this is your chance to do right by everybody. And to be known and go down in history as doing the right thing. And I just want to say we're counting on you to represent us, and that's why you said you're running for reelection, and I'm looking forward to you following through.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Carter Stackman. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Carter Stackman, 513 Cookman Avenue. I'm a property owner in Asbury Park. I want to thank everyone for their comments tonight and and participating in in what is a very important and critical time and decision to 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 look at. Listen, as as a property owner, it to me, it's, I I I don't believe it's all about the last dollar. I certainly came to Asbury 22 years ago. I committed a lot of time and effort. It wasn't always about the last dollar. Very concerned as a mission statement at our company that we protect architects and architectural structures in the central business district. I think we've done a lot in the community, and I don't feel that most of the product that we created in the central business district were vacant vacant lots. At a time when Asbury was 10, 15 million dollar deficits, I I don't think they were solvent, and they were dependent on the state to to operate. And so I've seen a lot of growth happen in Asbury, and I do think that you know, growth, there there are things that could happen in growth that maybe weren't addressed and could have been addressed better. I don't think this ordinance is the answer, though, in its present form. I just don't think there was, has been enough data done. I don't see any of the the coalition present any kind of reports of of justification for the extreme measures in this ordinance. I think that a rental cap certainly could be adopted to protect tenants. I think direct dollars through a you know, I recommended a SID tax that would be citywide, could create a housing fund that was meaningful, that got dollars into the people's hands, and it was direct and immediate. I think that's another option.
One minute remaining.
But, you know, it it it, this doesn't have to be a we against they. This doesn't have to be, you know, something that we can't resolve and parties come together. I know for a fact that I just found out about this two weeks ago. And I think time to, we all sit down, we we all sit down and we come up with a more comprehensive, better plan that we truly identify how many housing units are impacted, how many people are being displaced, where can we get money directly into the hands and what program works best so that Asbury is sustainable um, for the future. It it looks out for its its residents, its current residents, its future residents in a most meaningful way possible. And I just don't think rushing this extreme ordinance, which by the way, there's five hundred and sixty-five municipalities in Asbury and this represents this form ordinance represents about two percent of the municipalities. It is extremely extreme form of ordinance. So I would like a little more time that we can all put our heads together and come up with a something that makes sense and is affordable and it doesn't put us into bankruptcy or in a point where we're insolvent as a community again.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Felicia Simmons. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Felicia Simmons. I live at ten thirty-four Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Um, and I am one of the I am part of the Affordable Housing Coalition. I listen to everyone on this phone call and um, this ordinance is um, fifty years um, in the making and um, way too late, like um, Pastor Nicole said earlier, being a indigenous person and also an indigenous person from Asbury Park and surrounding area. I've seen my family leave. I've seen my community leave. Um, this ordinance, again, is not to make affordable housing. This ordinance is not to bring down rent. But we specifically use the word stabilization so it gives a clear picture of what it's about. It's about stabilizing. It's about a community that is topsy-turvy and falling apart and and drifting away, right? We're hemorrhaging um, people. At last night, I got two phone calls um, and texts and people finding me on Facebook, um, looking for a place they can afford in town because they want to stay here, right? There's landlords and property owners are speaking about um, the um, control. Um, and we're worried about the people who live um, that don't live here yet. No, I'm worried about the people from here that want to stay here. It was cheaper for my mother to leave um, Asbury Park instead of finding a two bedrooms event, it to buy a house in Neptune, right? It was cheaper for her to buy a house when she didn't want to make that investment at sixty-five years old, but it was cheaper for her to do such things because she could not find a place here. And it's the reason why we want to keep that and and for people that don't understand.
One minute remaining.
It it it's the ability they don't raise the rents after and that's to protect the pushout that has happened. It's not possible. These are things that have happened and are happening. And some of the landlords on the call are big offenders, not all of them, but some of them. And what we have to worry about are the people, the community, the families, the school district that we complain about the cost is so high because we don't have the family and the kids to sustain it. Why aren't the families here? They were pushed out. We have to do better for the community, the people. And that's where it came from. This was circulated by the people and we don't have an obligation to the property owners. We have an obligation to the people living here and dying here. That's who we have an obligation for. And I'm and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia. Next.
I'm calling upon one four five eight. Please state your name and address for the record. One four five eight. Star six to unmute yourself. One four five eight. One four five eight.
Okay, let's move on. There you go.
Hi, I'm sorry about that. Uh, this is Pat Scavino. Uh, I am a property owner, resident, business owner, landlord. I've been here for quite a long time. I've been here since the early eighties and um, I've been listening to both sides of this, uh, you know, on this ordinance and I have to tell you that um, I I think it's a very unreasonable ordinance. However, I think that there certainly is room for some sort of a compromise here. Um, I feel, uh, I have felt this coming off for a long time and I I think that the time is now that we can actually seize this opportunity to come forth as a whole and do the right thing for everybody in Asbury Park. How this is written will not work. All right, I'm not an expert on this. I feel like I'm fairly intelligent enough to understand it. Uh, I know seven hundred people signed a petition that want rent control. I doubt if all seven hundred people understood what they were signing. Okay, I I would urge the council and I will stand stand by my word that I will do whatever possible to make something happen here that is equitable for everyone. I love this town. I've always loved the town and I kind of have been ambivalent about what I've been seeing lately to the point where I'm starting to second guess whether even I want to stay here. But I'm gonna I'm gonna be here for the long haul and I will work very hard to make sure that this will come about in the right way. I think I know enough people in town that uh, I can get all sides of the story and put together something that would work with.
One minute remaining.
And that's all I have to say. Happy holidays and thank you for listening and I wish you all the best and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you. Next melody.
Steve Sims, I'm calling upon Steve Sims. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, how you doing? This is Steven Sims, fourteen oh nine Third Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, fourteen oh nine Third Ave is an owner occupied multifamily property and uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to state that I oppose the rental control ordinance. This ordinance came out of nowhere to me. I had to hear about it through word of mouth late last week. No one came to my house asking to sign a petition. I I don't know anybody that had was approached to sign the petition. This order now this ordinance will not help tenants, landlords or the town at all. Every study on rent control in this manner has shown that it doesn't work for the people in need. Affordable Housing Coalition has given no data or studies showing how it will help anyone. This ordinance, which includes vacancy decontrol, which hasn't been brought up much today, will make it unreasonable for landlords to improve their properties. This will give worse rentals for tenants and this will kill property values for all property owners at Asbury Park. Also with this ordinance, it will bring more spending for another department in the city. Thanks for your time. Please vote no for this ordinance.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon three three five zero, three three five zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Ernest McNally, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, the Sand Towner. Uh, certainly living at the Sand Towner on the fifth floor. You get to look out over the ocean and the city and uh, uh, after fourteen years, uh, I I I think I've heard enough stories by going to meetings and planning board meetings and zoning council meeting and all sorts of things where the developers seem to like take a position that they're like social workers, like they're really they're really not in Asbury to make money. They're in here to help fifteen thousand residents of Asbury i- in a in a just way that they have affordable housing, that there are good jobs, that there is a mixed economy uh, uh, being set up on Cookman with stores and clothing stores and things. But in reality, it's all about money. It's all about high density. It's all about maximizing. It's all about bringing in millionaires to have snowbird apartments here to to enjoy the million dollar pools that you're planning to build and drinks on the beach and drinks in the bars and drinks on the sidewalks and the smell of drugs everywhere. And 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 really, if 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 law and order were uh, enforced here, uh, I think there'd be less less need and less density and it would almost keep rents low. But since this open crime environment, the sin economy is here, there's a high demand and people will pay any amount of money to live in sort of like a Las Vegas type environment here. The the developers are not social workers. They have no interest. They don't want to see vacancy decontrolled. They just want to maximize. They want to end all the three bedrooms that are for families, make them two bedrooms, make small one bedrooms and 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 take density.
One minute remaining.
Take density to something that is so destructive to Asbury that how can you justify all these high rises with million dollar price tags and no one here buying them has anyone in the schools? That's why the schools are are collapsing. They're all in on pilot programs and tax abatements and all these genius developers and lawyers with all these ways to rip the city off and to rip it out of everything and they just make it sound like they're just here to help. They're just and by the way, I think some of the callers, the developers, you ought to check out some of their backgrounds. A lot of them have been been arrested lately for drugs and crimes and they're big names in Asbury. And and why do you keep considering them valuable people to call in, especially complain? Oh, we don't want rent control. Well, yeah, well, why don't you deal with that after you're facing your felony charges for drug dealing? You know, your whole family. Why don't you check these people out in Asbury? Developers are not what they appear to be and I'll put my money on good people in Asbury that deserve rent control. And if you don't do it, you go against what you were elected for. This town deserves rent control. You should vote yes.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Tracy Rogers. Please state your name and address for the record. Tracy, are you there?
Yes, Tracy Rogers, Sewell Avenue. Um, first, uh, I want to address a couple of things. Um, uh, Carter's statement that only two percent of the municipality is actually over a hundred and four, so that makes it twenty percent uh, have have ordinances of of uh, rent control or rent stabilization. Number two, I want to uh, talk about Ron Sammascini who represents the the law states that any municipality after nineteen eighty-seven uh, multi-unit is exempt. Uh, if he wants to throw up some ordinance that says you had to have a CO, I would love to see it. Put it up, give it to us. But right now, they're exempt. I also want to address uh, statements made by the city attorney um, of some, uh, I think he made a good statement, but there's some other issues that we have that uh, things that he did not note. Uh, in two in in two thousand and two, we 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 had a redevelopment agreement that is lasting almost thirty years. We are putting up an ordinance that can't be changed in three years. And we believe this ordinance is going to help stabilize, not push people out. And we have to look at what we're doing as a community and we have to understand that these rents have been escalated and no one has stepped up to say any different because the money has been coming in. And when landlords say we didn't knock on anybody's door, well, we we knocked on the city manager's door and we knocked on the committee who was working on our ordinance and we brought this up and we brought it up continuously. Uh, this the former city manager, Michael Capabianco, who says I'm going to do a rent study. And you know, we we've been pushing this this thing down down the road and people have been kicked out and families have been lost. People were working.
One minute remaining.
People have been uh, living here for a a long time, seniors. We have pushed many people out. And right now, this ordinance is not so as one person said draconian. No, it is a way of saving people's lives and keeping people here who want to be here, who have lived here all their lives. So we have to be courageous. This council has to take a moment and stand to say, look, we can make this change and we can actually and we will work. I I I I promise you, I'll be at the table to do anything that will correct anything that came out of this, but this is a good ordinance and I wish the council would pass it tonight.
Thank you, Tracy. Next.
Matthew Sigmund, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Matthew Sigmund, seven hundred Emery Street. Um, tha- thank you, counsel. Uh, thank you, everyone here. Everyone has a vested interest and cares about our community. Um, you know, I think this is a prime example of a good intentions with uh, extreme consequences. Uh, and you know, I think as a landlord, I I think a lot of people are right. You know, I I this happens to be a business and uh, you know, I I've been in this town for the last fifteen years, plus or minus. And you know, I'm I'm I I think a lot of people on this call aren't landlords in the sky with skyscrapers. No one not no one here is from I-Star. You know, I I took a small route of 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 fixing up a lot of single family homes on the on the on different sides of town and that were just deferred maintenance and completely destroyed. And we've refurbished them and have rented them to local people in the community and that has increased the housing supply because this is a a factor of of supply and demand. And right now, we have a housing housing shortage in Asbury Park because of the demand and that's what has risen the prices. So you know, as a landlord, I I I applaud the 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 Coalition. You know, you've brought this to our attention and you're shining a light on the inequality. And as one of the landlords in town and and the other landlords who have been talking, you know, it's we appreciate you because you've brought this to our attention and we see the need to help those in our community that need to stay here. And you know, we've been talking to the to the other side indirectly, directly, and you know, we have so many passionate people here that if we work together on something, we can hopefully keep as many people as possible here with with affordability. Um, and and I truly mean that. I truly mean that, you know, we could keep those families that have been here and we could keep it affordable. Um, I think one of those ways is to make it easier for developers to develop. I'm not talking about a million units on on an acre, but something where we can continue to build and 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 have more supply so it could help level out the rents. Um, and I'm talking about, you know, some type of rental cap on the on the increases year over year. That that whole book.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. That whole book and story moved me. Uh, you know, here here here's a here's a woman who had really tough times, was able to figure out through information that her rent couldn't be raised that amount. And I don't know if she's a home or not, but she, you know, that really put her i- in a great place. So you know, giving information to tenants for those bad landlords, uh, we'll call them quote unquote, some landlords who aren't doing their job. Those tenants need to know that the city is there for them to help their, you know, help give them proper housing. Um, so I'll I'll close with, you know, you know, this, you know, we we do want to help. We do want to figure out ways to make it uh, easier for people to live here. Uh, this ordinance is written to a street and if it was something more in the middle, I think we'd have more grounds. But you know, I strongly urge the council to vote this down and I think us as landlords and 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 the other side, we need to sit and talk and 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 work this out for everybody. Uh, happy holidays to all and a happy new year to a to a better two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you. Uh, next.
I'm calling upon Pat F. Pat F., please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, my name is Patrick Fasano, uh, thousand five Main Street, uh, Asbury Park. I am the notorious drug dealer that Ernie is afraid of. Um, I a lo- a longtime listener, first time caller. I've been a huge fan of Asbury Park since the mid nineties when my family first got here and started developing property. Uh, you know, I would work summers here cleaning up the job sites on Cookman and Madison, uh, you know, when they were they were boarded up. Um, you know, I won't attempt to appeal to a motion. I won't attempt to guilt the council into making a decision either way. Um, I just want to say that, you know, I think that something definitely needs to be done. There's definitely problems that need to be fixed in terms of uh, you know, the rents getting a little out of control in town. Um, the only thing I, you know, my fear is that at the belief is that if passed tonight, that it that suddenly, you know, all of the people that have been disproportionately affected will, you know, be will greatly benefit. But in reality, I believe it would be more so the gentrifiers that, you know, are blamed to have caused this problem that will really be the ones popping the bottle of champagne because there's nothing that addresses uh, the people that, you know, the dresses that need to help the people that need it most, which is, you know, low income, impoverished, struggling people um, that could benefit from a, you know, a different method of aid and assistance uh, that, you know, that could probably be worked out between groups. I know that there's frustration on both. on both sides. One side feels like they're blindsided. The other feels like it's not fair because it's been out for so long. You know, some, you know, it's it there just seems to be a lot of uh division that I I'm hoping that we can work together and rectify. I mean, you know, I'm I'm an easygoing guy, whi- whichever way this goes, I'm I'm going to roll with it. I would prefer if the council voted no and that we all came to the table and worked together uh towards a resolution which directly helps the people we're trying to help and doesn't spread it across the board. You know, I mean, to say that, you know, the 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 poor single mother on the west side with two kids uh should have received the same protections as, you know, my my white six-figure attorneys in two-bedroom apartments on the east side. I I just don't understand, you know, not 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 to break it down that way, but thank you. Um, I just think that there's a way in which we could maybe approach this and uh and really just funnel assistance and protections into the indigenous people of Asbury Park that should stay here because, you know, that really is the backbone and the spirit of the town. And, you know, I I don't want to see anybody go. You know, it's just it it's always it was really fun. Basically, you know, I'm 31. I've been coming here since I was six. I, you know, I love seeing the growth. I love seeing the development. I love seeing the innovation. And I'd like to keep seeing it. And I'm afraid of just to sl- you know, I feel like we're slamming on the brakes, which should be done, you know, in the in the correct manner for those that need it. I just, you know, I just want to see us get that aid directly to the people that need it and don't spread it across the board towards, you know, the people that really don't necessarily n- need this help. But, you know, I'm short on time and I just want to thank everybody, you know, happy holidays. Thanks for hearing me out. I really care about everybody in the call and I hope we all can, you know, come together and work this out. And I hope that Ernest can forgive me. And tha- and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that I do see Mr. Simo Cini's hand raised, but um he has already, he has spoke the first time. And we would like to give everyone the opportunity to speak and we are still um calling on people who have not spoke yet.
Absolutely. And I see several other people besides him with their hands raised and they will not be called on till everybody gets their first shot.
Okay. And if and if I call on someone that has already spoke, someone please um make me aware of that.
Absolutely.
I am calling upon 8474. Please state your name and address for the record. 8474, please name an address for the record.
Sure. Jordan Modell, 1001 Second Avenue. Am I in? I can't.
Yes, you are.
Oh, phew. Hi. All right. So I'm just going to try and set the record for the quickest talk. Um, I actually agree with both sides of all of this stuff, which is I worry about the law of unintended consequences. Asbury Park definitely needs some form of rent stabilization, but I'm not sure it needs rent control. Um, and I think the way this was drafted was well intentioned, but I don't think it gets you to where you need to go. The town council was smart enough to include 20% affordable housing in every project going forward. So if there's no projects going forward, by simple economics, you're not going to have more housing in Asbury Park. The less housing in Asbury Park you find, the more expensive things become, the less affordable housing will be built. So, um, the only reason I think the council may wish to vote this down is because nobody had enough time to get together to actually work on a compromise, which Dan Jacobson, in his infinite wisdom, um, has been suggesting for a while. So yes, I desperately think Asbury Park needs some form of rent stabilization. I think that the two sides can get together. I just don't think that this resolution is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Rita Moreno, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, uh, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. Uh, it it's funny that all my friends are calling in and I never was even signing the petition. Nobody asked me to sign it. That's a miracle. But anyway, I'd like to say uh that I've been here since 1967, long time. Seen Asbury at its worst and I've seen all the changes come through. I think this ordinance is too late for anything. First of all, when you could sell a house on Ridge Avenue for 400 and almost $500,000, I think it's 474, you know that the changes are being made. I think they should be something. I don't know about rent control. I only read a little bit of it and I didn't like what I read. Because when people buy property and make an investment and they have tenants, I know I've been a landlord, you expect to make money. That's what it's all about, capitalism. And to think that this rent control ordinance, of course, I didn't read it all the way, but I agree with most of the landlords for some reason because I think it was rushed into and it 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 is one-sided from what I read. I'm trying to be fair. We have to remember that we're no longer an Abbott district and we're going to be paying more school tax. And who's going to pick up the who's going to pick up all this money to run the town? The more people we get, the more we need, the needs are there. You have to remember that. The school tax is going to be horrendous because because of what happened. And keep families here? I don't know. I don't know how good the schools are anymore. But I think that you should think about this a little bit more. And I'm sorry to say it because I have a lot of friends that are really involved in this.
One minute remaining.
But you have to remember what happened here. The redevelopment plan drives the drives the rentals, it drives everything. And that's what we have right now. That's what you should be attacking. We have tax abatements, we have pilot programs. This little square mile has everything. We have nonprofits, 87 of them, maybe more now. You have you have to think about all the people that aren't paying taxes. And I, for one, think that we have a lot of affordable housing. We have all the west side and and some of the east side has affordable. That I don't understand how now we're now talking about affordable housing when this town always had enough. We have Lumley Homes, we have Robertson Towers, we have Washington Village, we have Asbury Park Village, we have Boston Way, uh, we have uh Washington Village. Those are all affordable. And remember, they don't pay taxes. None of them do. You have to remember that. That's very important. That all these places, 87 churches and nonprofits.
Rita.
All are here. Yes.
Rita, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. And just because we've.
I understand.
Been respectful of the three minutes and you can come back later, but thank you very much. Next.
Okay.
Calling upon Ruth Ann Harrison. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, Ruth Ann Harrison, 406th Avenue, Asbury Park. Um, I'd like to address this ordinance as well. And, you know, I was that single mom raising two kids, coming into Asbury and buying property here in 86. And, you know, I took a shot in neighborhoods that, you know, I could barely afford, which nobody else was buying into. And I have a few properties here now. And a couple of things that have come up so far I'd like to talk about. Um, for instance, Mr. Harris mentioned that people are moving out of town because their taxes are going up. Well, this ordinance will definitely increase taxes for the average homeowner. I know that every year I have a couple of multifamily properties and every year I get forms uh from the county and I have to fill them out, how much rent, you know, I'm collecting. And that is how my taxes are, uh, that's what my taxes are based on. So if all of a sudden there's rent control and, you know, rents are stabilized and rents are not going up, property values are going to go down and uh and taxes are going to start going up for the average homeowner because the multifamily people are no longer paying uh their fair share of taxes. So that's one of my issues. Um, another thing here is that, you know, I think that this ordinance will hurt future development. Um, developers, yes, they are in town to make money. And um they do come in and they buy up, you know, uh decrepit properties and rebuild them or knock them down and start fresh. And with that kind of development, that will bring in more uh tax revenue that will offset taxes for the rest of us. Um, few other things. Um, uh, well, I think that the people who need these uh benefits the most are not going to benefit. One of my points is that, you know, being here in Asbury since 1986, I can't tell you how many New York people have moved into Asbury.
One minute remaining.
Part-time and still they have rent-controlled properties in New York. They're rich people. They're not the poor people that need the help. So I am dead set against this ordinance. I think that there can be other ways to work around this. Also, there are already um there are already um laws in place. I mean, if an unscrupulous landlord does raise the rent beyond, you know, a reasonable amount, any person of need can go to the charities. They can go to the court. They can get free legal help. They can get free funds and they can fight that because there are laws in place. And so I don't think our little city here needs this ordinance. I think it's going to hurt everyone. And if we could just table it and get both coalitions together and talk about things, perhaps we can come up with a reasonable uh solution. Uh, last but not least, the other thing, I never raise my rents rarely. I have tenants that have been with me for 10 years. If I raise the rent 5% in 10 years, that's a lot. And you know what? I raise rents when tenants move out, then I raise the rents. I can't do that now with this ordinance because this ordinance says, oh, no, you know, I'm I'm stuck. So anyway, that's it. Uh, last but not least, I just want to say I love the council. You guys do a great job. Thank you for everything and have a great holiday season. I'm done.
Same to you.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
I'm calling upon Chris. Chris's iPhone. Please state your name and address for the
Sure. My name is Chris Lackey. I am a a petitioner and I'm part of the Affordable Housing Coalition. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. So, uh, thanks for listening to us. Uh, I just wanted to say that this petition, I I I've probably spoken to, I mean, we as a group have spoken to at least 700 people in Asbury Park and I've spoken to a lot more over the course of the last probably five years um doing community organizing and housing uh organizing for folks in Asbury Park mainly, some in Neptune. But um, the, you know, the biggest issue that we found and we did, we did a survey and we spoke to people and asked them questions around their community. And one of the biggest issues we heard was the the housing costs, the that the 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 high rents was probably the number one issue affecting folks uh and uh rent increases over over the past 10 years. Uh, and we've seen, you know, I've seen like, you know, uh, a lot of development on the west side. And with that developments come uh economic inequality, which we call gentrification. Gentrification is really not a social issue. It is, but it starts with the economics, right? People move in uh with a lot of money and they develop, they've developed in Asbury Park that doesn't, that people can't, the people that live in Asbury Park can't afford. Uh, so we've seen people be displaced, families been displaced. We've talked to them. We've uh heard their stories. We've tried to help them. Uh, so, you know, I I've heard multiple times in the media and on tonight's call that this is this is we're we're it's an extreme proposal and that we're extremists, but it's really just comes from uh us.
One minute remaining.
Us trying to help these folks. And this and this ordinance is is fair, you know, it talks, if you if you buy a new property, say you're a landlord or a developer, you buy a new property like that and you and you want to turn it into housing, you're free to charge what you like, a fair market value for that. It's it, you know, it doesn't fall under our ordinance. It's just the current, the current state of things, this current buildings. Um, so, you know, and and landlords can still raise the rent between 2 and 4% or whatever, you know, or what the CPI uh states, you know, so they're getting, you know, 40, 50, $100 uh rent increases every year, as long as they as long as they abide by what uh the ordinance states by just keeping it maintained properly. Uh, and there's going to be a rent board where they can go in front of the rent board and ask for, you know, hardship clauses where they can, you know, if they 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 need to raise the rent for a certain reason, if that reason is justified, you know, they can raise the rent higher than what what the the CPI is or the 4%. Uh, we're not, we're not doing this to put any landlords out, you know, but it we really stated for the tenants.
If you if you could wrap it up, uh, we'll then we'll go on.
Oh, I'm out of time. Well, thanks again. Everyone have a happy holiday.
Thank you and happy holidays to you and your family. Next.
Calling upon 6082. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Mitch. Yeah, Mitch Mitch Khan, uh.
All right.
11779 Lakeview.
You you've already.
I spoke before, so.
Okay.
I think Mitch already spoke.
Okay.
Yep. Go to the next.
All right. Uh, we are going to call upon 6082.
I I think that's the one you just called.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was it.
I'm sorry. Um, Jacob Smith, please state your name and address for the record.
You're doing great, Melody.
Hi, this is Jacob Smith. My address is 115 Grassmere Ave. in Interlaken. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I spent several years living in Asbury Park up until about a year and a half ago, and it was a vital part of of my life as it still is today. Um, I do um own two rental properties in town, um, and I manage them. And I've made many improvements to the town and I I do oppose this ordinance. I understand um many of the reasons that it's come about and I'm certainly not against any sort of change. But I think as proposed, uh, there will be many challenges and effects that will be negative um for the town, for homeowners, uh, not only of these properties, but also of single-family residential, as well really as some of the people that it's trying to protect. Um, I I think the real problem in Asbury Park and really this part of Monmouth County is is inventory. There is not enough inventory for the amount of demand to live in this area by the beach. Um, I actually work as a real estate agent and I I handle quite a few rentals throughout the area. And I will say that Asbury Park actually has more apartments for rent than many other nearby towns. You could pretty much spread out from Manasquan to Long Branch and it's a pretty similar crop of of properties that are available. So the problem exists everywhere in this area and the rents are fairly similar in Asbury Park as they are some of these other towns. So the problem isn't just exclusive to Asbury Park. However, this ordinance obviously only will work in Asbury Park and as as a result, I think will have some unintended consequences on the town. Um, really, the the rent board and the governing body that will be um displaced to to monitor.
One minute remaining.
System will be very, very expensive and cumbersome to the town. And I see that as a problem. I also suspect that the inventory problem won't be corrected as people will have to move for a unit to become open for a new individual. And as such, when that unit becomes available, someone from out of the area, Hoboken, New York City, they can come down and scoop up an apartment because of their great credentials and income due to fair housing laws. So the people that may want to move from Asbury Park to another apartment in Asbury Park won't be, won't find any benefit from this ordinance. You know, there's just so many unintended consequences that I think need to be analyzed before uh a rent control ordinance goes into effect. Uh, I certainly uh could speak on this for for more time, but I I wish you all the best and good luck. And I certainly do oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Nina Summerlin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Nina Summerlin. I live at 1101 Bangs Avenue. Um, and I just have a few issues with this ordinance. Um, I have asked on a few different occasions to have a copy of it sent to some of the residents in Asbury Park on the west side so we can actually read the ordinance before we've um signed a petition on anything. Um, and as of today, which we're in December now, and I've heard about this since October and I haven't gotten a copy of it yet. Um, and for me, I'm a renter. I've been in my residence where I am now for 35 years. So as a renter, I understand, you know, both sides of the situation with, you know, the tenant and the landlord, but you want to be fair to both. But you can't expect renters to sign petitions if they don't understand or agree what they're signing for. Um, and that's really all I have have to say. Um, and that's really all I have, have to say.
Thank you, Nina. Next.
Hey, I'm going to confirm, um, I'm going to ask for confirmation that everyone that has their hand up now has already spoke once. Mr. Mayor, do you want to, uh, continue now? Is that, did I miss someone?
Yes, um, I have not spoken. I'll raise my hand.
Okay, um, four zero two six, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, um, my name is, um, Sylvie St Pierre. My, um, address is twenty, um, twelve thirty two Monroe Avenue in, uh, Asbury Park, New Jersey. And, um, I was on that call earlier. I thought the ordinance was starting early, but, um, given the opportunity now, I've, I've listened to everybody's concerns and, um, their thought process in regards to this ordinance and truth be told, uh, some of the points that they made are very valid. However, I also hear a bunch of, um, landlords who are focused so much on greed. So I'd like to share a, a story that one of my neighbor actually just went through. And, um, she's a Latino woman with three children who was, who was a single mother, um, and who was also, who didn't also have her paper. So, um, the rent, her rent keeps increasing to the point where she ended up getting evicted. Until this day, I've been trying to get in contact with her. I was trying to help her out with, um, um, different resources because I was entering at the time, going to school full time. I was entering at Affordable Housing Alliance. There was literally not much that we can do in regards to the landlord. And truth be told, the, the one of the biggest thing that I actually had the opportunity to do was to actually do, um, find out tenants' rights as lo, as well as landlords' rights, which is one of the main reasons why I support this particular ordinance. Because what I'm, what I found out in the process is that most tenants don't really know their rights. So even when they're in town at issues, they don't really know where to go, where to have it taken care of, which is where this ordinance will, you know, would, would come in, in place. It, it's not just a one-sided thing, but rather it would benefit both tenants as well as landlords to be able to have a group of people they can, they can pour their complaints onto. And that would get something done and it would be done fairly. So, um, I honestly would truly implore you to really consider, um, passing this ordinance tonight. Not, not just because for the people like my neighbor, but also for my sister, just all people from, also my sister, who's, who's actually had a two income household, quote unquote, but working aimlessly, her and her husband, trying to put her on, on, you know, on, on her table, still is, still barely able to make ends meet because the rent keeps increasing on her as well. So it's the little things like that that you find and you hear, the stories like that you hear, you get very frustrated because you have people coming, you know, who's buying all these things, who, who know, who are doing all these properties. They are, they have no regard to the struggle that the minorities have to go through to even barely make ends meet. But all they do, all they care about is their pocket, you know, so that they can continue having their deep pockets. So I would greatly implore you this evening to actually help the people out, the people, you know, that voted for you because they trust in what you said, when you said you were going to be there for them. This is the time now to be there for them, to be the voice that they need you to do in this matter. Thank you so much and happy holidays to all of you and have a happy new year.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you. And I think Melody, we have a new hand up, uh, Catherine Healy.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Catherine Healy, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Catherine Healy, Athav, Asbury Park. Um, I'm speaking tonight as a homeowner, property owner. Uh, I'm not part of the Property Owners Coalition. Um, I'm going to keep it short though, because so many who have spoken tonight have already said it all. Um, despite affordable housing and past affordable housing ordinances being passed, people are still being pushed out of our city. And to me and my family, that is more critical than anything, um, that anybody from the Property Owners Coalition has tried to raise tonight. The people are the heart of our city and it's, it's what makes Asbury Park, Asbury Park. That's why we signed the petition and why we are urging the council to pass the ordinance. Um, when people are losing their homes, their stability, their community, people being upset about not being able to profit hand over foot seems to pale in comparison. For a city that's comprised of 85% renters and over one third of its residents living below the poverty line, these are your voters, these are your constituents, and I urge you to do the right thing and vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you. Happy holidays and everybody stay safe.
Thank you and happy holidays to you. Melody, next new one?
Josh, I'm calling upon Josh. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, my name is Joshua Valerio Belmar in New Jersey. How's everybody tonight? I started buying properties. I only owned a few in, in Asbury. Uh, so the last 10 years, I have run through Asbury, uh, rebuilding a lot of the dilapidated homes. I built new homes, I restored homes, I have renovated, uh, severely dilapidated multifamily, uh, small multifamily, uh, homes. And I will say that to me as a landlord, the most important thing is having a tenant that stays a long time, pays rent on time and takes care of my property. That to me is more important and I would assume that that to, that, uh, to most landlords, that is most important because tenant turnover is very expensive. It's our, our, our single most expensive cost other than insurance, debt service and taxes. So we want tenants to come and stay for, you know, at least three years, four years, five years and take care of the place. So I don't have to keep turning these units over and over because that's expensive. So my rents, bought it, it was $1,250 a month. Now I'm at 1,450. So that, that is not price gouging my tenants. Uh, I, I dumped significant amount of money into these properties to get them restabilized a, and re-rented. Um, and, and, you know, we, many of us are, are, it's, you know, spending a lot of money to, to fix these places up, to make better housing stock for renters. Um, my rents have not doubled um, over the last seven, eight years, but my taxes have. My insurance costs have gone through the roof.
One minute remaining.
And, you know, w- we are not sitting here, um, counting our money hand over fist. On average, I'm probably making six to eight percent on my money for my investments. That's not greed. That's just an investment. However, my investments, I'm up constantly throughout the night with tenant calls. I work seven days a week. And I, you know, expect and deserve to be compensated for that extra work. And again, I'm not gouging my tenants. I cannot and will not increase my rents more than five percent a year. Many tenants, I don't increase at all for three, four years in a row. So the only issue I have with this rental ordinance is the vacancy de-control stipulation. That to me is, is the biggest problem i- in this ordinance. And it's going to cause an issue for everybody. Even though this ordinance is meant to do some good for, for, you know, the people who can't afford the rent. The de-control i- is, is going to be a problem. It's going to force people like me not to put money back into their problems, projects. Uh, you know, w- we're not going to have the money to fix up our properties, to maintain our properties. And we're going to create a problem where there's bad housing stock. And that's going to
Okay.
Lower rents and lower property values.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm going to have to cut you off because we still have some people that haven't spoke yet. Okay.
Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you and have a great holiday. Melody, you're up.
All right, um, it appears to me that we are, we have completed the list of everyone who has spoken once. Am I?
It looked that way to me also. So we'll go back and wherever you want to start, if you want to start at the top.
I will start at the top.
I would again respectfully ask that everybody try to keep their second round around three minutes also, so we can get everybody in. Thank you.
I'm calling upon Ron Simonetti. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Ron Simonini, 301 Route 17 North, Rutherford. Um, it, it's been a fantastic dialogue and I don't want what I'm about to say to sound in any way disrespectful because I don't know how hard it is to do a referendum. Um, this one unfortunately has some really fatal flaws. And I think that they came out, um, and, and I, I think Tracy's a really righteous guy and I get what he's trying to do. And I think there is a way to do it, but there's never just one way. So we're hearing people say, this ordinance. On the property owner's side, you're hearing people say, well, let's figure it out, but this ordinance is bad. On the tenant coalition side, you're hearing this ordinance. You're hearing, it doesn't really make any difference that we're voted four to three. By the way, the plurality that elected Joe Biden over Donald Trump was narrower than four to three. So four to three makes a big difference. You heard Mitch talk about rent control in 104 towns. How many towns have added rent control in the last 25 years? And how many have taken it away? That's the statistic that should be cited. You heard somebody say that the properties are exempted from 83 and other person said it from 87. I advocated for the law in 88. It was passed in 88. It was a 30-year exemption. You absolutely positively must have filed an exemption with your building department at time of CNO. Check out the cases in Englewood. Check out the cases in Hoboken. Ask your attorney to do the research. This ordinance does not provide for that. This ordinance puts single-family homeowners under rent control. Where was the thoughtfulness there? How is that an ordinance that's sustaining people in place? How is that an ordinance that's avoiding gentrification? It's not. This is not the only way. And so as you look at it, landlords are not the enemy. Are there, is there a profit motive in owning property? Of course there is. But for somebody to say, sure, you can invest in property and buy property, but you don't have to have tenants, what did that mean? That, these are all signals that this group did not think this through. The last thing I heard Tracy say on Saturday when we was on the homeowners association call was that this is the starting point and we could adjust it. He wasn't aware at the time that you couldn't adjust it for three years. And if he was aware and misrepresented himself on that call, that's even worse. So I think there is another way. The property, the Tenant Protection Act is one way. It needs to be discussed. But there's no way that anybody is going to be happy with this ordinance, in particular the tenancy, because we've seen these very severe ordinances. Don't say that it's not in the, in the two percent. It is. Yes, there are 104 ordinances, but there are only nine that are this severe, that are this choking on vacancy de-control. Nine of 104, that's nine of 565. That is less than two percent of the towns in the state have an ordinance like this. I think you can be proud of doing something that protects tenants, but you'll never be proud if you have to pass an ordinance that is so one-sided and that the, the proponents of are so tone deaf, they're actually not hearing people say, we can work out something to protect the people who need protection. But this ordinance is meant to punish people who own property for the wrongs that have occurred over hundreds of years. We can't govern that way. That's divisive. So I would urge you to not pass the ordinance to move forward with convening committees and groups that can talk this thing out. Consider the Tenant Protection Act as a, as a stopgap for the three years that this ordinance has prevented you from dealing with rent control. And then you'll see what your community needs.
Okay. And I appreciate you for wrapping it up. And for some reason the clock didn't start. So you're probably right around three minutes. So, uh, Melody, next.
Felicia Simmons, uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Felicia Simmons, um, again, 1034 Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm sat here and I kept notes. Most of the tenants, I mean landlords who spoke, you'll be exempted or there is a way for you to address every issue that you spoke about. And to speak to, um, the gentleman previous, um, uh, um, Ron. If you want to come to the table and, and speak and, and talk and, 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 and send a hand out, it would be great to spend with facts. The facts are, we sat down with this ordinance with some of the top lawyers in the state of New Jersey. Fact is that some of those top lawyers have said to the city council that this is one of the most fair acts for the, for landlords and for tenants. Fact is that this time, this took years to happen. Um, it didn't happen overnight. And we continue to put our hand out to say, let's listen. Fact, Tracy, when he spoke this weekend, said it can be amended. It can be amended. In three years, this is a starting point. This is not the end. Fact, this is not to create affordable housing, nor is it to create, um, to, um, um, stop landlords from receiving the top that they want for rent, whoever they want to rent for, for whatever price is. It is to stabilize a housing stop and for the community, to make sure that the community stays here. Because then again, we don't come to landlords and say, hey, we need your permission to move. Under the law of the Faulkner Act, we have the right to stimulate laws and, and ordinances for the betterment of our community. So that's our community. Not everybody in our community will agree, but the community, the 700 people from the east side and the west side and everywhere in between, from the young, the old, the black, the white, the straight, the gay, everyone, all of them have signed a petition. This is not, uh, this is not the, the cure for everything. I wish it could be more. I wish I can say you can only charge, you know, 1,400 for one bedroom, even though in this town you can get one for 18 and 19, right? I wish you could say that you can do all those things. I wish that the Boston Way wasn't mixed income. I wish that, um, the, that Lincoln Village wasn't going to be torn down for missing them. I wish the old village wasn't going to be torn down and all those families going to be displaced in the next couple of months, in the next year. I wish a, a lot of things, but we can't address those things. Right now, those, what we can address is to stabilize the community. And then from there, we can work together as a community to add those things that everyone spoke about today. But right now we have to stop the bleeding. And that's what we address. And it is legal and it is binding and it's unwavering and those are the facts.
Thank you, Felicia. Next.
Three, three, five, zero. I'm calling upon three, three, five, zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Ernest McNally, 400 D Lake Drive, apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. So, uh, after I think decades of, um, listening to things that go on in the city, uh, I, I still, uh, it's, it's not that I'm anti-developers and re-developers and master developers, but the facts are the facts. I mean, in, in my opinion, the city as a, as I grew up in, has changed from a, a family city with schools and churches and businesses and shopping. You know, you talk about people living here and, and the, the fact that what we need is more, uh, let's say expensive condominiums, more density, and we need more of these kind of businesses that are going in, these bars and clubs and restaurants. Well, but that's not for the people who live here. That, that has nothing to do with us. And in fact, it, it puts a tremendous tatt on the city services which drives this whole wheelbarrow down the road for decades where you have to keep building more dense, you have to keep building more expensive, you have to keep charging more rent, and you have to drive property taxes and property values up for that reason, to pay for all of this service that the city now has to do. You increase density and the sewers don't work. You have to redo those. Electricity has problems. Infrastructure has problems. You have flooding now because of all the permeability that's lost in all these development lots. And it, it's like a runaway freight train. And it's all about not what people are saying, making a fair income. I mean, come on, developers and re-developers are not people that make, I, I don't want to say they don't make it. They make it in the system the way it is.
Minute remaining.
But they're, but they're millionaires and billionaires. And, and not one of them will deny it. And, and really when they say, well, it's all about what we make on rents. Well, no, it isn't. Because your prop, the property value goes up because of these constant reassessments, which it, it's almost like the elected officials and, and I, I'm going to say it, are not really for the people. You're for the developers. And when you go to the meetings and you see the lawyers and the lawyers for the city, the way they work together, no one who lives here that's just an average person has any representation. We're like whisper away, uh, you know, get out, be quiet, don't say anything. And this is the Asbury we want, you know, like a mini crime Las Vegas. That's what we're going to create here. And we're going to blot out the ocean and the sun for anybody who's ever lived. And we're going to blot out the ocean and the sun for anybody who's ever lived here. And don't even come near the beach to swim because you can't afford it. And if you can, you gotta pay ten dollars to park and a lot of money for beach passes.
I, I thank you if you could wrap up.
You're welcome. So please don't, please approve this rent control. The, the people here need it and it's just, and it's, it's good.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Six, zero, eight, two. I'm calling upon six, zero, eight, two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yeah, Mitch Khan. I, I spoke before. Uh, one, seven, seven, Upper Lake, you were having a ring with New Jersey, Vice President, New Jersey Tenants Organization. I just wanted to clarify a, a couple of things. Uh, one, this ordinance is not going to stop redevelopment. Okay, redevelopment and new construction of apartment buildings are going to be exempt from this ordinance. So that's not really what this ordinance is really designed to do. What you really have to focus on are the people living in town. What percentage of their income are they paying in rent? A, a majority of the tenants in Asbury Park are paying more than forty percent of their income in rent. Just last year, the average rent in Asbury Park went up twelve percent in one year in the middle of this COVID crisis. What's going to happen is that people are going to be priced out of Asbury Park. They're going to be forced to move. Now, I've heard all this talk about, oh, we have, uh, affordable housing, uh, in our zoning and our various plans. Are you guar, are you saying that you're going to guarantee that every person that is priced out of their apartment is going to be given an affordable apartment in Asbury Park? You're not saying that. Okay, so I think you have to operate in good faith. You don't have a plan to really, that's going to handle the kind of displacement that you're going to be having in this town. As far as the small landlords that are investing and they're saying they want vacant decontrol, well, okay, if you're, if you don't, you say you're not going to raise your rents more than five percent. So with this ordinance, you're like limited the C, the CPI. But you can get more rent through capital improvement surcharges if you upgrade the property. So all is not lost. So I just think a certain level of honesty has to be addressed. Read the ordinance and see what's in it. Uh, and I think you really have to do.
One minute remaining.
Let her living in town. So, uh, I trust that you'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Andrea Goldman. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Andrea Goldman, three hundred Seventh Avenue. I am a petitioner and a member of the Housing Coalition. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd just like to speak to the language that people are using. I'm hearing words like, this is extreme and severe and overreach and awful and terrible. And, you know, what's actually terrible, right, is like, I don't know. I live in the northeast and I've seen, I've been here seven years and I've seen like nearly every Hispanic family get pushed out. Like, I think that's what's terrible. And you know who moved in to all those buildings? Like part-time white people. Like honestly, I'm here year-round and there's people who aren't here that often. And I think that's what's terrible. Um, you know, I don't know, the word awful, right? I think the looming eviction crisis is awful, right? I think, think long-term residents being pushed out, um, allowing that and, and knowing that's going to happen and not taking action on it, or if you don't, I think that would be the extreme measure, right? Like, the inequality, that's what's severe. Um, so when we're calling this ordinance, all those words, no, the, the problems, those are, those weren't these, um, I guess extraordinary adjectives, right? And the ordinance really is just a response that's proportional to the severity of the problem. And to one of the other speaker's points, you know, if only nine towns have an ordinance that is as strong as this one, I think that's a shame because we know that there's more than nine towns experiencing this, the same severity that we are. Right? That, especially on the beach, like I see it happening in Belmar, right? Hitting out the longtime residents, a lot of Hispanic families of which I don't know if anyone on this calls Hispanic, but, um, I don't even know if they still live here. Uh, you see it happening in Belmar. They're being replaced with like white people and, and that's fine for white people to move in. I'm white. And by the way, I have a great landlord who's barely raised my rent and he's awesome. And all the landlords.
One minute remaining.
Reasonable, all landlords to keep it reasonable. Thank you. But you know, we're supposed to work on behalf of others. And that's why I do this. And that's what your job is. You, you ran for this. And if, like, I don't know, like John and Amy and Jesse and Eileen and, I, I just, guys, if you have any sort of inclination to feel for this, shouldn't you just come down on the side of doing what's right? I mean, these landlords are still going to hold power. It will be disproportionate still, even with one more tenant on the board. They're still going to own the properties. They're still going to get rent. The problem is severe. This ordinance just matches it. And I think that you know what's right. And if you know that, then just do it. The landlords will be okay, but these people you represent, you ran for reelection to do that. You promised us. Uh, just please, we're looking to you to do this, all right? Like, that's what your job is and we're counting on you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Melody next.
Calling upon the Harris family. Please state your name and address for the record. Harris family, please state your name and address for the record.
Dan Harris, seventeen Ridge Avenue, Asbury Park. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, just for, you know, I'm speaking from my heart, not from my pocket. Um, our family, um, we own property for over thirty years. Some of it we inherited, some of it we purchased. Majority of our income, the majority of our property is paid off. So we're not actually crying broke or anything like that, but we're not millionaires by any stretch of the imagination. But I can say that I have had multiple tenants in my properties die in my properties. Why? Because we loved them as much as they loved us, okay? And one way you do that is one by taking care of your property, okay? Treating them with respect and not gouging them for rent. I've had years where we not, we don't even increase the rent. That creates loyalty and respect. And what I'm saying is some of our tenants, yes, they're people who live below the poverty limit and they're on section eight, but we treat them with respect. And that's all this ordinance is asking, is that poor people, working-class people, middle-class people, the working poor be treated with respect. They need someone to be their voice. And I applaud the people who put together this ordinance because they're speaking for those people. To the city council, all of you who I know personally, please stand up for these people. Stand up for the little guy. The big guy is always going to be all right. And like I said, they may not be coming for you today, but they may be coming for you on another day. Just look at it this way. How many people in Asbury Park can afford to eat at the restaurants in Asbury Park? Very few. How many people in Asbury Park went their stuff out in the summertime to be able to afford to live there?
One minute remaining.
Okay, thank you very much. We have to be cognizant as to the people who live in this town. And we, if we make houses affordable for them, they will stay. They love this town. They don't want to be chased out. Help them stay and pass this ordinance. Thank you and God bless and have a great holiday, all of you. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you, Danny. Same to you. Next, Melody.
Calling upon Tracy Rogers. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tracy Rogers, Sewell Avenue. Uh, first I want to address, um, Josh. And, uh, he talked about the, the properties that he owned. And I can understand where he, where, where he's going. And also Ms. Harrison. And, uh, to address, in nineteen eighty-five, this is Asbury Park Press said there was redlining. So other people, the minorities couldn't buy the same homes you were getting and be able to fix them up and also be landowners and keep people here. We have to reflectively look at where we're going and how this town is going from, uh, from, uh, luxury to, to pushing people out. And I, I don't mind people, not capitalists, people looking, but they also have to look at one of the urgent needs of people is, 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 is housing. And, uh, speaking to Ron, I did not misrepresent myself on that call. And I, and I, and I totally disagree with you saying that. I said it takes time. And this ordinance is the first step and it does need time. We're not going to come in, we're not going to put a sit-in right away. We're not going to, uh, do all these things that we need to do. We need to take time. But we need to hold the line. People have been passed out for years. And single families, I can give you, and if you want to come into this town, where have you been when two single-family landlords, a guy who was giving money for housing, kicked, uh, ra, wanted to raise the rent to market value when he was given, uh, money to fix up houses and, and, and keep them affordable? That's what, that's what you have some renters doing. And they were single family. And we, we, these families were pushed out of their homes. So don't think that a single family, that those same landlords that bought those houses are not doing this. This is, this is a misconception and it, it can be proven. And the city knows about this. So we need to look at the fact that we don't want this to be a, 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 a Belmar where, where, uh, families, uh, own houses and not there all year. This is a twelve-round city, a twelve-month city and we want to keep it vibrant. We want to create more jobs. And so people can raise their rent, but people are living here and everyone, uh, uh, is involved. And, and, and rents have gone up more than twelve percent, but look at the salaries they haven't. Look at the people who are working here, who are struggling hours and hours just to, just to afford when, when they're, they're living over their means because these rents are escalating. So this is time now for us to do it. We cannot kick this down the road. We have been in this too long and this has gone back from, from years. In, in the twenties, we knew that this stock was here. We didn't adjust to a problem. And, and, and I'm not saying this council totally was involved, but we missed the opportunity to do these things. And I got here in two thousand fifteen, I said, we have vacant properties and we can fix up and we can make affordable. So right now, thi- this is not the one single method. And Ron, if you can come up with, you haven't been here. You haven't seen the people's faces. Seven hundred people are immediately signing a petition and, and, and wanting, all we had to do was say the word rent stabilization and their eyes lit, lit up and said, I want it done.
Tracy, if you could wrap up, uh, then we'll go to the next person. Thank you.
Yes, and, and, and I think this, this council is courageous enough. And John was at the planning board and champion, champion us, us, uh, boarding in this ordinance. So I think the next step is we have to look forward to making sure that we can keep everyone here that, that wants to be here and people not being gals. And I'd love to work with anybody on anything. And I want to thank everybody and have a happy holiday. And, and let's try to make this happy. Let's give a Christmas present. Let's, let's, let's let people smile and think they're not going to be pushed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody next.
Calling upon Linda. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, uh, Linda Phillips, four hundred Deal Lake Drive. Sorry, I tried to unmute before but didn't get it done. You can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, so a lot of people have spoken since I first tried to speak in. They've said most of what I wanted to say originally. So I just want to validate all of these people who have spoken, like Tracy and the Harrises and Andrea and a, a few other people. And I just want to make the point again, which I think can't be made enough. And actually Rita said it pretty good. It may be already too late. A lot has already happened. Things have gone way too far already. You keep saying this is, this is like, or not you, but some people keep saying that it's too quick. It's happening too quick. It hasn't been too quick. We've been asking for these kind of equity things for years. And people in this town, before I got here, were asking for it. So it isn't too late. I mean, it isn't all of a sudden, but it will be too late if we don't just do something. We have to start somewhere, like Tracy said. You have to start. You never have a perfect ordinance. You always change them as the years go by when you see what is, needs to be fixed. It's not written in stone. People are not going to, um, lose their properties because all of a sudden they can't raise the rent twelve or fifteen or twenty percent. It's just trying to, and we need to keep families here. We need to keep the people here that are here. We, we'll, we'll end up with a, a town full of people who aren't here. They come here for the summers for vacation. They don't live here. They don't care about the town. They just care about coming for the summers and the beach and having fun. We want to be a town that's a town, a community. That's what it's always been. I don't want to see it become not a community, which it is about to become if we can't get control of this situation. And, um, I, I know that you as a council.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. I know that you adopted the affordable, um, housing ordinance because you saw the importance of that and your hearts and heads were there. And I think on this instance, if you could just put your hearts and heads back in the same place and adopt this ordinance and we can do all the fixing we need to do if there are things that we find need to be fixed. That's, that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Linda. Next, Melody.
I'm calling upon Mike S. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Mike, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, it's Mike Suzork, three oh five Eighth Avenue.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, I just want to, I'll make it quick, but, um, I didn't get a chance to speak before. But, uh, I am a, uh, a homeowner in town and a landlord. Um, I, I signed the petition for the ordinance. Uh, I support the ordinance. Um, I, I agree with the, you know, a lot of what, uh, uh, the people representing the renters, um, uh, said on the call so far. Um, and, and that's it. I think, you know, the landlords in town, you know, they're, they're throwing up their arms. They're all upset. But, you know, the landlords in town have done very well, um, o- over the last twenty years. And I think it's time that, um, there's been some protections put in place for renters. Uh, and I'm saying that as a landlord. Um, and that's, uh, that's, I, I hope the council will consider passing the ordinance as it stands. Thanks.
Thank you. And, uh, next, Melody.
Michelle Gladden. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Gladden and I'm speaking as a resident, not affiliated with any organization I may be involved with or work for. Um, as a long-term renter in this community, I just wanted to add a couple of things that we need to look at at the global perspective. Um, the school district, while the S two bill has, has sparked the reliance on the amount of students, the enrollment in a school district, we are faced as a community at looking at our taxes going up because they have to come up with at least five million a year for the next four years in cuts. And it's a transient community. Um, I know in speaking to members of the school district that oftentimes they have people enroll. It's a transient community and they lose them halfway through the school year. Part of the issue here is that, you know, if we're, Asbury Park has largely been a rental community. The short-term rental ordinance that was enacted was meant to stay that, right? Pushing people out of that rental market. And I've heard tonight a lot about equity. Equity for Black and Brown people, equity for an underserved community. And I want to speak a little bit to some of the anecdotal stories that I know just as, you know, food for, for thought. Um, I know of landlords in this community who won, who purchased a home for somebody who moved into this community to live and work here, had bad credit, bought the home for that person and had that person pay the rent. That is a long-term developer in this community. I know of another developer in this community who really moved mountains to be equitable in the people.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. Um, so I want to speak to the fact that while it seems like we're on opposite sides, we're really not. And I think we all have to come to the table and have further discussion. I think the points that this committee has raised are laudable. They're on point. I've seen the rents on the east side, on the west side escalate. And the majority of those are new people moving in and refurbishing, putting lipstick on a pig. So I don't know that this gets passed tonight, but I think it's at least, if it doesn't, a start to a conversation that needs to continue, moving forward with brevity. And that's all I have to say. And thank you all and have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Have a happy holiday. Next, Melody.
Charles Gormley. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Charles Gormaly. I spoke earlier tonight. I'm an attorney with Brock Aker and counsel for the Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition. I'm an attorney with Brock Eicher and counsel for the Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition. You know, i- this has been one of the more, uh, interesting discussions to listen to as a community struggles with a really important and difficult problem. And frankly, one would have to be unconscious not to feel uh, an emotional reaction to what one of the other speakers summarized as somebody, single mom with kids losing their home. Uh, that's a really, really sad thing. But your job is even more difficult than grappling with the difficulty that that mom grappled with. And that is because I can pretty much assure you that when that tenant moved into her apartment with her family, she met with a landlord who can, who investigated whether or not she could afford the rent. She felt she could afford the rent. She could afford the rent, obviously lived in the apartment. And through circumstances that aren't caused by the landlord and aren't caused by the tenant, something happened in her life that made it incapable of her to meet the obligation that she made with the landlord. That is the obligation to pay her rent, whether it was a job loss or illness or something in her life caused a difficulty. The, the problem with the proponents of this ordinance is they want to use those circumstances of real individual tragedy that are caused by complicated problems in not only in Asbury Park or in Monmouth County or in the state of New Jersey, but in the entire country where a huge amount of disproportionate wealth has occurred. And people have been disrupted in their economic status. That is not caused by property owners. It is not caused by landlords who face the same challenges, who face the same difficulty about paying their bills every day. So don't use these circumstances of individual hardship to rationalize what is really bad public policy. It's why people and, and communities are moving away from rent control. The one other thing, observation I'd make is that if this committee is resolved to push this onto the ballot and try to convince the voters in Asbury Park that this is good policy for Asbury Park, it will be extremely divisive to this community at a time when the community should be coming together to jointly solve a problem. They're losing a tremendous opportunity by forcing this onto the ballot. Because likely it doesn't succeed and by law it cannot be reconsidered for three years. One final thing, I was glad to hear both Felicia and TR say that they have a lot of respect for the law. I have a lot of respect for the law. I dedicated my entire life to it. And I can tell you, I really respect the process where citizens like this group
One minute remaining.
Like this group went around and got a petition to have the council consider this ordinance. But I think it's disingenuous for the committee to say that they have a respect for the law when they actually violated the law in collecting this petition in the manner in which they did. Governor Murphy in May of this year, in the middle of this pandemic, issued executive order 132, which exactly prohibited the manner in which this petition was gathered and submitted to the clerk. This petition by the governor's emergency order could only be submitted by using online contact because of the danger of spreading COVID-19. And yet this committee ignored the governor's order and collected this as an in-person petition. I urge you to vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Matt, please state your name and address for the record. Matt.
Yes, Matthew Cresio, 1615 Park Avenue, Asbury Park. Um, I'm not going to be very short, be very short about this. Um, the one issue that I have, everybody's talking about, you know, equity and everything. The rent control board consists of four tenants, three landlords. Where are the homeowners? Where's the individual homeowners? They're not represented at all. Meanwhile, this affects our taxes. And if people go to sell their homes, if they have a two-family home, that they occupy fully now. So having no representation, representation from homeowners on there is totally unfair. And just for that, it should be voted no. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Melody.
Pat Scavino, please state your name, record. I'm calling upon Pat Scavino. Pat, star six, unmute yourself. All right, I'm going to move on to the next person. I am calling upon Tracy Rogers. Tracy, please state your name and address for the record.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. Um, I'd like to address Mr. Gormley. And we, we, we did talk to the Secretary of State in collecting this process. And let me, let me first say that was a hybrid combination. So, uh, he's misrepresenting how this, how this ordinance process came up. But also the same petitions that were gathered, were gathered for the election that went on at the same time. So i- i- it rationals to me that a person running for office can go out and give petitions, but a person that couldn't, he finds and deems illegal. But there was a hybrid portion to this and, and it was not totally clear. But we got a lot of these signatures very much earlier and we doubled the amount. So he can't say when these, these signatures were taken. So let's, let, let, let's not, uh, uh, call things out and, and, and try to insinuate on these issues when there has to be true clarity. So, you know, right now, the, the, the residents spoke and the trueness of what we're talking about is that people are suffering and they want to be heard. And Mr. Gormley, your biggest concern should be for people who are the most vulnerable because they're not being spoken up for. So thank you and have a good evening.
Do we have any more?
Uh, let's try and see if we can get Pat back. Pat Scavino, please state your name and address for the record. Pat?
Next.
Okay, Ernest McNally, I'm please, I'm calling upon Ernest McNally. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh yeah, hi, Ernest McNally, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park in Jersey. Sandtender, uh, I, I find it interesting that a lot of people that I'd like to see at these meetings, which are the actual citizens and people and residents that we're talking about. Uh, in, instead, we, we get all these diatribes from developers and lawyers and the tenants association and why everything is wrong and why this, this bill is wrong and this ordinance is wrong and rent control is wrong. And well, there's nothing really right going on in Asbury. The fact is, what the fact is, the school system is dying because families are being pushed out. You can't fix that with, with bonding and, 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 uh, um, other, other matter. If you're driving families out with children, a, a city is going to die. Uh, unless, I, like I keep saying, unless it's Las Vegas and all of a sudden you make it into casinos and gambling and, and, and a sin city where that's where your revenue comes from. But everybody, if you listen in this, and people have been here a long time, people have been born here. They want this city back to its roots as a family vibrant with an economy for everyone, with everyone, poor, middle or rich, swimming in the ocean, able to go to the beach, able to find a place to park, can work in town if you want to, you work out of town if you want to. That, that we want, place to worship, good schools, and we don't want crime and corruption. And this merry-go-round of, of driving people out who are good people, i- if it doesn't bring you to tears, there's something wrong. There has to be something wrong with people who are going to put lawyers out there to badger people and say, oh, you broke this law and you did this. Listen, since when are lawyers saving this world? I, that's what I'd like to know. And I sit in enough meetings in this town that to feel like lawyers are heartless when it comes to average people and, and people who are struggling. They just look at the line. They get their fee.
Twenty-five seconds left.
They get the density, they get what they want, they displace families. And, and that's, that's the way it works. And most of them don't even live in the city. Look at the people calling in. I'm from Lindhurst, I'm from Hoboken, I'm from here. Listen, listen to the people from Asbury and, and you can't go wrong. You know, you, you're a mayor and a council there and you know, you probably know everyone in this town. And, and, uh, everyone is struggling. Uh, except for people in the kind of places that it really doesn't matter what the rent is for them. They could care less. But for everybody else, for average people like us, this is so critical and this is a moment for you all to do the right thing. Thank you. Pass the bill.
Thank you. And, uh, Melody, before you go on, let me, I, I I didn't know we was going to go this route. Now I don't think it's going that route. Uh, uh, any, any new conversations or respected movie, listen to any jabs and cross punches to people that spoke will not be tolerated with. So let's keep it to the issue. At the end, I may make some statements as far as, but so far we've got 46 speakers and everybody's been fantastic as far as like, uh, being respectful, which I'm so proud about. So let's keep it that way. And as far as like going back and forth and saying, he said this, she said that, they're wrong. Let's just keep it to the issues. Thank you.
And to piggyback on what John's saying, can we just, you know, it's 10:15, you know, we, we're really interested in what people have to say. And if you find that you're repeating what's already been said, um, you know, just to be mindful of the fact that it's, you know, it's 10:15.
I'm calling upon Andrea Goldman, please state your name and address for the record.
307th Avenue. And I'm not going to repeat what I said, although I do want to clarify one of my points. Um, I was saying that the problems are severe. And I think that if the inaction, not just, I'm not necessarily saying your inaction, but the inaction of so many over decades has led to such a severe problem, right? And so that's what leads to this ordinance. Um, the other points that I wanted to make that I didn't address earlier, um, were that, well, first I think it's notable that there is a consensus. Um, people have come together and they've called to tell you that landlords and property owners, it's not just renters, right? I think, I don't know, I'm actually pleasantly surprised, uh, that so many property owners and landlords want you to pass this. Um, and you know, look, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm kind of resentful that if, that you guys might vote no, because then, you know, we have to, we already went out during a pandemic, but the numbers were a little bit better this fall. But if you guys vote no, we have to go out when the numbers are skyrocketing in the cold to get even more people to, to sign, like to, to go and vote. And, and like, that's just so unfair. You know, people want this and you know they need it. And you know it's important. And yeah, you might have sympathies and hear what, you know, the property owners and they, they were promised this money or whatever it is that they're arguing, the expectations that they had. But, but you also know that the problem is really bad. And that should lead you to vote yes. Like if you're undecided, your default should be to vote for this, right? You guys ran for reelection promising to represent everybody. Well, 85% are renters and these people need your help. And you ran for election in a city that is disproportionately black and brown. And that was your choice. And so this is why you ran for it and this is what you were elected to do. And I just
One minute remaining.
Just kind of becoming resentful that like I might have to go out during a pandemic and I'm not doing it for myself. Like I said, my landlord's awesome, man. He fixes stuff. He doesn't raise my run. He's great. Um, it's for other people and that's why you guys are on city council, right? So like if you vote no, you're saying like, I'm not sure. I said, you know, I get it, but I'm going to vote no. And it's like, there's already a consensus and you know it's right. You could do it right now. I mean, I'm getting nervous. Am I not going to be able to see my family forever just to prove to you how badly people want this? And I don't know, man, I'm not angry. I'm not that kind of person, but I don't know. It's just really upsetting. And so I just really strongly urge you to do the right thing. You're never going to regret that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Felicia Simmons, I'm calling upon Felicia Simmons. Please state your name and address for the record.
It's Felicia Simmons in, um, wow, Angie. Um, so 1034 Soul and, and mine is just this reading of this ordinance. And again, the best minds in the state and outside of the state, um, along with the best minds in Asbury Park have come up with this. And it is for the people and the landlords, even if they don't see it. But I'm just scared that my town, not just the, the, the cats, but what I'm seeing is these rental rentals and summer rentals. That's what, you know, it looks like you want when you don't want decontrol. And I, I know what it's like to have people who are homeless in the summertime and, and, and then to come back home. And I don't want to see Bush's role, even though I love it. And I don't want to see Belmar. I want to see my home. I want to see a place where all, a millionaire, a, a person who's, you know, maybe, you know, homeless or a person in middle class, sitting at the same table laughing and joking, because that happens here. And, um, I just want to see my home. And, and, and to tell you, um, counsel, that these are the best minds and it is legally sound and it is proper. And it is, it will, it will set you up on the right side of history. So thank you again and, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Felicia. Next.
Calling upon 3509, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Polly Shilga, 1100 Fifth Avenue. I'm calling on Michael Stone. Um, we do support this ordinance and we do support rent stabilization for two main reasons. And I don't want to, I don't want to, um, repeat anything other people have said, although probably I'm going to sort of, and I don't want to go any longer. You guys are great for having stuck around for such a long time. And I applaud everybody who's been putting their hearts and minds to this. Um, we would like to see families stay here, people who have had, um, long-term rentals not be displaced. And we'd also like to see rent stabilization so that people who work here, teachers and firefighters and police officers can also, um, and, and people who work in construction can also stay in, uh, in the community that they live in. Schools will benefit. We'd like to see young people here. We'd like to see children walking down Comstock and down Sunset to the high school and, and, um, and a vibrant community. So yes, please, please vote for this ordinance. We really do support it. Thank you so much and everyone be safe.
Thank you. Uh, next, Melody.
Jennifer, I'm calling upon Jennifer. Please state your name and address for the record. Jennifer?
Yeah, Jennifer Suwak speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I did speak earlier. I just wanted to circle back with an observation that's rather global, but yet specific. I, I see there's 78 participants on this call and from the people I know on this call, and we're talking about essentially black and brown people being disenfranchised. Um, I only hear the two Harrises and Michelle and Tracy and Felicia. And they all know I love them. And I think that that in and of itself underscores this problem and the reason why we're having this ordinance and having this discussion. And it, it offends me and hurts me that what we're talking about is not represented by more of the people that we're talking about. Which brings me back to, this was a, a perfect horrible storm coming. City council, each one of you individually, I just very much respect collectively. I, I, I have to admonish you for not seeing the storm of gentrification coming and not doing more when you could have. And now we're at a point where we're debating an ordinance that I believe will not actually solve the problem, which everybody has mentioned on one side or the other, other, sorry. And I want you to just sit with that for a minute as you move forward with either this ordinance or another collective conversation, that we are not including the conversants in the conversation who are directly affected. Why is that? Why are they not feeling that they can or even know to participate in the city council? Why is that? Why are they not feeling that they can or even know to participate in the city council?
One minute remaining.
That is describing and determining their destiny. Um, this is not to have an answer. This is to just put this into the conversation that I do believe going forward, everybody here is of goodwill and wants to participate in solving a horrific problem. But please look at why you don't have the people on this call who are directly affected. Forward, City Council, you have to figure that out, and you have got to figure out how to enfranchise those people who are the most affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Peter Siegel, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening again, everybody. Peter Siegel on Webb Street in Asbury Park. Excuse me. And, uh, I, I, I just wanted to actually take a moment to point out something. The woman who spoke just before me now, um, was mentioning how the council didn't see the affordability storm coming. And I, you know, I, I, I just, I don't know. I don't see it. I, I, I wanna go back to the city attorney, Fred Raffetto's comment at the very beginning of this dialogue where he pointed out the fact, sixteen hundred and eighty-seven affordable housing units have been created. Seven million dollars, seven million, let me repeat it, seven million dollars for affordable housing being put into a fund. There's a housing rehabilitation program. The master plan has specific goals that create affordable housing. There's developer fees in an ordinance to generate more money, the fair share, uh, plan for affordable housing. There's eight separate ordinances that include, uh, housing, construction and, and set-aside. I mean, there's so much that's been done. It, it's a really interesting and unique issue. Uh, there's so much that's been done, yet we still are faced as a community with this very important topic that we're talking about tonight. And the thing about all of those things that the city council has done and enacted, uh, that's been consistent is that all of those things were thought about, were discussed, very passionately over a, a reasonable amount of time with all the stakeholders involved, with all the community members involved. Uh, unlike here tonight, we're, we're, we're really, uh, being forced to, to discuss this very crucial and important issue with a, a gun to our head. And I, and I know that, uh, Felicia and Tracy, uh, you guys have been out there for, for more than just the two weeks that we've just heard about it now. And I, I know that and I appreciate that. Uh, but for much of our community. Thank you for much of our community. We're really just only hearing about it now. Uh, we're really only hearing from you now. And I know that you've been out there, but we're really only hearing from you now. We know the problem is there, but we're only hearing from you now. And like all of this, these other items on this list that Mr. Raffetto mentioned earlier and that I just repeated, I think it, it only benefits us and behooves us as a community to have the time to reasonably discuss them now. And I'm not talking about over the course of years or months. Let's do it now. Let's discuss it and let's hammer it out and let's really figure out what the right thing is and the best thing is. This ordinance as it's written, isn't it? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised unless somebody else does, uh.
Move to close.
Wait a second.
Sorry.
Wait a second. One, Pat Scavino, but we've, we've tried to get to him three times. I don't know if he's still there.
You want, well, well, let's just try one more. Pat, Pat, I'm calling on Pat Scavino.
Hello, are you here? Hello?
Pat, go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm having, I'm having such technical problems here, and it's because of my age, believe me. Um, Pat Scavino, six thirty-one Cookman Avenue. Look, you know, you've heard both sides of the story tonight. This is a very complex issue. I don't believe that twenty days is enough time to really hammer out a really good plan, uh, to help the people of Asbury Park. Um, I think that you know the landlords well enough, at least the larger ones, to understand where they're coming from. They've all stepped forward tonight and said, look, they're willing to do something. I think we all know that. Um, let's not rush into this. Let's table it. Let's get together. Let's make up a comprehensive plan based on data and fact so that we all have a chance to really analyze what the situation here, what the long-term effects are gonna be if you pass this. And it's just gonna be a domino effect, and we need to understand what's gonna happen down the road, okay? I don't think there's a landlord that I know that doesn't show any empathy for these people that are in need, okay? But this plan doesn't really help those people. It helps, you know, people that are coming into town too. And these are the people that I'm hearing tonight that, you know, people are against, that are fighting for rent control. Well, that doesn't help that situation. You know, you have to have some confidence in us that we're gonna do the right thing. And I hope you have enough confidence in me that I'm level-headed enough and, you know, understand what the situation is, and I have a voice, uh, for both sides. And those of you who know me, I hope you understand that I'm being very forthright and honest with you, all right? So, you know, let's give it some time. Let's sit down. Let's hammer out a deal that's good for everybody. That's, uh, especially not in the long run, it's good for Asbury Park as a whole. And I think we could do that. I don't think we're far away. There are issues in this ordinance that just will not work. But there are a lot of good things here too.
One minute remaining.
So, you know, hopefully you'll see it, uh, that way, and you'll vote no with, you know, down the road, the opportunity to do something that would really work and will be beneficial in the long term for Asbury Park as a city. Thank you very much. Happy holidays, and I wish you all well.
Not seeing any other hands raised? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing on twenty twenty?
If I may, Melody, um, Maureen Nevin still unable to raise her hand and would still like to speak again.
Okay, thank you. Maureen?
Maureen, star six.
Yeah, it, it won't say star six either. You had to, um.
Maureen?
Maureen, we hear you.
Start the clock.
Now, okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, you know, when I hear people say that this was, uh, all, you know, last minute and we're, you know, how come we didn't see it before? This ordinance has been on my, my website, my Facebook page, Asbury Radio, since we presented this ordinance to the council. We presented it as a courtesy to the council before we ever showed it to the public. And it's been up there ever since. And we showed it to everyone. I'm one of the petitioners. And we showed it to everybody, uh, before we asked them to sign it. And most of them said, I don't have to look at that. I want rent control. And I think that it behooves everybody in this town to know the position, the heart of the council. Because ultimately tonight, it's gonna be your decision what goes forward. We have already said what we need from you. So you're gonna, you're gonna be making this decision. And we, and, and people need to know what your positions are. Which, which members of this voting block are actually have, have tenants of rental properties themselves? Because where you sit governs your perspective, and the, the, these voters have a right to know this. And I wanna say that this makes me cry. For twenty years ago, when some town fathers returned from Bridgeport, Connecticut, with the redevelopment rights in their hands once more for this waterfront, everyone's eyes were watering because this was our big chance. And it wasn't, it wasn't that long for me because I had just moved in, what, two, three years before? But for the people who lived here, it was everything. It was a dream come true. But their, their dream was never in this.
One minute remaining.
Thank you, Melody. So I think you have to take, look at this, forty-seven percent of income on the rent. That's, that's like half, half your pay is going to the rent. How can people survive like that? You know, it used to be, you filled out a form for a rental, and just to show that your, your, your one week salary would cover the monthly rent. That's not where we're at. It's true. A lot of people said that a lot of things, other things have to change. And, and this is gonna make a start. This doesn't have to, to remain where it is for ten years. This is three years. And you can, you have the, the ability now to come up with a solution. We can merge this, this ordinance with your ordinance. So you do have, and you know, as a, as a writer on deadline all the time, I never did my best work without a really good deadline hanging off. So I wish you luck, and I think you can meet that deadline, if you understand that people are desperate for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Rita Moreno, I'm calling upon Rita Moreno. Please state your name and address for the record. Rita, star six, to unmute yourself. Rita?
If not, go to the next person.
Okay.
She just, she just unmuted.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a minute, and I know you're very tired, and I am too. Um, I didn't hear one word tonight about Section Eight, which, when I ran my business, ninety percent of my customers were on Section Eight, and that meant that part of their rent or all their rent was paid for through some program that we have here. I don't really know that much about it, but it is a remedy for people that can't pay their rent. It's called Section Eight. They should look into it, and I think it's run by the county. And they did very well with that. I knew a lot of landlords that had it, and they survived with it. So that's another thing that they should look at. There is a remedy, and it's called Section Eight. And good night and good luck. Bye.
Thank you. Rita, next.
I'm calling upon Bill McElin. Please state your name and address for the record. Star six, to unmute yourself. Bill McElin?
Soon as I say go to the next, you'll get on. So go to the next.
Bill?
Yes, can you hear me?
Now we can. Go ahead. Your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thanks. I'm sorry. You probably should change that House rule about letting people speak for a second or third or fourth time. Um, you, you're on horns of a dilemma. You've got a classic argument here. The haves against, the have-nots. I, you know, I, it's a, it was a wonder, it is a wonderful discussion. But I think if you listen carefully, uh, council members, often you will hear in some of the very arguments that are being made by those that oppose this resolution for why you should pass it. This is a token. This is simply a token. This is not gonna change the world. And believe me, uh, a, 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 a ninth grade algebra student is probably well aware of all of the protections that, uh, property, that landlords have written into the tax code. We just had a national example of how that works. Uh, in, in any event, um, I wish you well, and I urge you really, send the right message to the people who are speaking to you from their hearts as well as their heads tonight. Tell them your care for them. Pass this resolution. Any problems you have with it, work it out later. Nothing is going to upset the world. I wish you all well. Good holiday greetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Ernest McNally, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Ernest McNally, four hundred Dale Lake Drive, Asbury Park, Sandtender. So, uh, it's long, it's a late night, but let, let's put it this way. Uh, seven hundred people signed, and I keep hearing that there's not enough voice of those involved. A signature, an awareness, a willingness to sign your name to a document. And in most of those people's minds, they're a victim of circumstance. And it's very resentful to hear people quote, refer to people as those people, you know, those people and these people. You know, it's really, it's us. You know, developers have an interesting way of saying, don't worry, we'll take care of those people. Don't, don't, we're doing a lot for those people. You don't see it. You, you walk or drive around Asbury Park. There's not being a lot done by the developers for what they call those people. And really, it's resentful that they even use that language. So the, the point is, there's a lot of good points made here, but, but follow the fifteen thousand people, the regular people like us who are, are, care about everybody, and just trying not to listen to so much developers and the lawyers because they, they just have a way of, of just kinda always getting exactly what they want, and it's never enough. It's never, ever, ever enough. So again, please vote yes for this.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands. Take a motion to lose the public.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed on twenty twenty dash thirty. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty?
John, do you have something to say first? I've got so much to say, I forgot it. I mean, uh, I mean, I, I think the best thing, and Fred, you correct me right, before we have discussion, we should, uh, move it in seconds.
Move it.
Yes, that's correct, Eric.
Do I have a motion to move it? Move it, Quinn.
Second it more. Okay, I, I'm gonna start off very briefly and probably not even touch on to what my real thoughts are. But, uh, I just gotta say again, I think there is fifty-six some people, some duplicates have spoken. Uh, I am just so very, very proud, uh, that this could have been a Hatfield McCoy thing, but instead it was just so very civil and so very respectful and, uh, Rita will tell you, that's not the Asbury Park of old, so, uh, because stuff like this would blow up. I'm so happy it didn't blow up. I'm not gonna mention anybody by name, but I gotta say this. I, I, very, I think I gave everybody a lot of latitude as far as we strayed from the ordinance several times, but because it's such an important ordinance, uh, I had no problem with that. And again, I'm gonna respectfully say I disagree with a couple of comments that were made. Comment made like, uh, it was an illegal petition because it wasn't done by the right way. But then that person ensued the city because we accepted, we believe it is, the legal petition. Uh, somebody said, uh, this was presented to the council a month ago, and like, I guess I wasn't at that meeting. Uh, and somebody said this ordinance was our ordinance, and that's not the truth. And then somebody said, this is just a token decision. It's the furthest thing from a token decision. Uh, this is a very important decision. Uh, nobody, including myself, is taken lightly. When this started, uh, I reached out to Tracy and others, and we've had a dialogue from, uh, almost day one. It was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And, uh, a lot of people don't know, uh, city representatives and, uh, the petitioners' representatives have met, and we've had very good discussions. Again, they were very civil. Uh, everybody knows this is an important issue, and, you know, it, it's, it's not being taken lightly by any of us. And, uh, at this point in time, that's all I have to say. And again, I, I can't thank all of you enough for just being so civil and like getting through this. Yeah, it was long, but we've been on longer, uh, things about when we passed the affordable housing. We were on for like one o'clock in the morning. Some of the people right now, they're, they're pushing for this, we're against the affordable. So sometimes I just don't understand the logic of people, but that's either here nor there. So again, I just thank everybody for, again, being respectful and civil tonight. And if anybody else from the council wants to say anything before we get to voting. And if anybody else from the council wants to say anything before we get to voting, go ahead.
Are there any additional comments? Not hearing any additional comments from the council, I will move on to the roll call for vote.
Before we go to vote?
Sure.
I just want to say that I'm in order of rent stabilization in our state. I personally, my mind's just, because of race building, being unconsiderable and forcing them out. I have concerns about the way this ordinance is being written, that it involves some national and public policy.
If I can interrupt Eileen, we can't hear you.
Maureen? Yeah, Eileen, you're...
Okay, so, I just feel it's important for us to engage in dialogue with all the stakeholders in our city. I've heard that again and again tonight, you know, that we should be representing everyone. I don't know that we've got the opportunity to do that, and that's something that's really weighing heavily on my mind.
Does that complete your comments?
Yes, yes.
Are there any additional comments from council?
Yes, this is Kendall. I've been on both sides of the fence, and I know exactly what people are saying, but I'm still confused, because my heart is, my heart is just beating fast, because I'm not exactly sure if, because I don't think we had enough time to really, really hear, even though we went hours tonight, really, really sat down and figured this thing out. So, I would like to say, maybe, maybe this is not the time to vote. But if, I would like to stand for it, because I sympathize with both parties, and I need to hear more, and I want to be fair. That's my comment.
Councilmember Clayton, did you have a comment?
Yes, you know, I agree, rents have skyrocketed in town, people are forced to leave, and I do believe that there is a need for some rent stabilization. I know that I, when I lived in New York, I was a beneficiary of that, and it worked for me. And I applaud the Affordable Housing Coalition for coming forward, and all the work that they put into this. I do wish that we had had an opportunity to work together as we did on the affordable housing ordinances. But this, it seems like this has become something like landlords versus renters, and I think it's more than that. This is not going to be just for the renters, it's going to affect the homeowners and the taxpayers in the city. And I just don't think that we've had enough time, and I wish there had been, as someone remarked, public participation. We needed to get people out to have a hearing, to really go through the ordinances so that we all understand it. And I see some faults in this ordinance that I don't know if we should have to live with for three whole years. I would love for us to do something. I agree, there is urgency. We need to do something now. So let's get together and make changes, and put something out that we can work with and that we can pass. That's, those are the ends of my comments.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn, do you have any comments before we move on to roll call?
Melody, I think John is asking to be unmuted? Or Mike?
Yeah, it's, I'm unmuted, Amy, that's fine, the mayor is trying to call in.
Did John get knocked out on it?
Yes. So, Mike, the mayor just got back in, I'm going to hang up my other phone, Amy, go ahead and make your comments.
I'm going to make my comment before I vote.
I'm good. Okay, so the mayor should be back in the meeting. Let's just wait for him to get back in.
Absolutely.
I believe he's unmuted.
Are you there, Mayor?
Nope, actually he's not, hold on. And this is Fred Raffetto, just for one quick moment, I wanted to interject. Deputy Mayor, you said you had some comments, and you were going to wait to make those comments at the time you vote. I would urge you to make those comments before Melody starts to call the roll.
Can you hear me?
And take the vote.
Oh, Moore's back.
Moore's back, I apologize.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
I think you could, yeah, no, I think you could start the roll call, Melody.
Okay, thank you.
I would recommend that you make your comments now, Deputy Mayor Quinn, if you're going to make comments, otherwise can't say yea or nay when the roll call is called.
So, I'm going to make comments, and then I'm going to vote? Because I want to clarify my vote? So I totally get what you're saying, Fred, but this is what I'm going to do.
All right, I'm...
I'm just suggesting that you make your comments before the rest of the votes are taken, because your comments might affect how someone else might want to vote on the ordinance. And under parliamentary procedure, comments are supposed to be made during the discussion period before you get to the calling of the vote.
I see your point, Fred, still going to do it my way.
Okay, Melody, take the roll call.
Okay, I will now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
I have to vote no on the way this petition...
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
I'm abstaining.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
So, I think this is a flawed ordinance, I'm cautiously optimistic, something better can be collaborated on and brought before the council. Until that time, I'm left with voting yes or no on the concept of rent control. As a person who truly believes that the affordable housing crisis is a cornerstone of the inequity crisis we are staring down today, and that it is our responsibility to be measured and forward-thinking for all of our citizens in this town, I'm voting yes. I would allow this ordinance to move forward to signal to all parties, and I mean all parties, that I will vote yes again when something that addresses reasonable concerns is brought before me.
Deputy Mayor Quinn, can I have, your voting?
Yep, my vote is yes. Yep, my vote is yes.
Mayor Moore? Ordinance fails. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second on adjournment?
Second.
Second, Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now closed to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.